Morning, everyone. We're going to continue with our budget study sessions. Tony, would you please call the role?
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis. Dwan. Candelas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra. Kameh.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Just a reminder, we're going to kick off with public safety, which had originally been noticed for yesterday, but we ran a little long on our other topic areas. After public safety comes neighborhood services. We will see if we have time today to get into transportation and aviation services. I'm hoping we do. And toward the end, we will, so we'll do council questions and comments after each CSA. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll go to open forum for members of the public to comment. We made, and our city managers telling me that if we stretch, we might even get to environmental and utility services and get caught up. Let's hope. All right. Who am I turning it over to?
Good morning, Mayor Mahan, City Council. I am Fire Chief Robert Sapien. It is my pleasure to offer the presentation of the Public Safety City Service Area Fiscal Year 2024-25 Proposed Operating Budget. The Public Safety CSA includes the Fire Department, Police Department, and the Office of Emergency Management, and the Office of the Independent Police Auditor. With me today is Acting Chief of Police Paul Joseph, Office of Emergency Management Deputy Director Jay McCamus, and Independent Police Auditor Eddie Aubrey. Collectively, the Public Safety CSA mission is to provide prevention and emergency response services for crime, fire, medical, hazardous, and disaster-related situations. Public Safety CSA outcomes are: one, a safer San Jose with effectively effective emergency response services; and two, resilient communities that are prepared for emergencies. The Fire Department's mission is to protect life, property, and the environment through prevention and response, providing all hazards emergency response, including fire, rescue, hazardous materials, and emergency medical. For the Police Department, the core services include crime prevention and community education, respond to calls for service and patrol support, investigative services, and regulatory services. The role of the Office of Emergency Management is to guide the city's emergency management program and to promote and collaborate with our regional and community partners to build a comprehensive and sustainable posture of resilience. The Independent Police Auditor provides independent civilian oversight of the San Jose Police Department by taking in complaints from members of the public about San Jose police officers auditing internal and external misconduct investigations, preparing annual public reports, making recommendations to improve SJPD policies, participating in the department's review of officer-involved shootings, and conducting community outreach and engagement. In terms of budget programs that the city has implemented, this slide represents a sample of our CSA's programs. The full program listings can be found in the department's sections of the Proposed Operating Budget. For the Fire Department, the budget program areas include: Fire and Emergency Medical Services Response, to provide residents high-quality fire and medical emergency response services in their most critical time of need; Fire and Emergency Medical Services Dispatch, to ensure clear communication and appropriate deployment of resources as the department's first first responders; Special Operations, including Hazardous Incident Team, Urban Search and Rescue, and Aircraft Rescue Firefighting; Fire Sworn Training, Fire Safety Education Review, and inspections. For the Police Department, the budget program areas include: Field Patrol, 911 Communications Center, Special Operations, Air Support, and Other Patrol Support Units; Crime Prevention, Coffee with a Cop, School Safety, and School Liaison; Homicide, Sexual Assaults, Gang Investigation, Family Violence and Internal Affairs, Gaming, Cannabis Regulation, and Police Permits. For the Office of Emergency Management, the budget program areas include: Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, Emergency Operations Center Capital Project, Community-Focused Emergency Planning; And finally, the city's Independent Police Officer Budget Auditor budget programs include: Oversight of Police Misconduct Complaints and Public Outreach, Independent Police Auditor Management and Administration. In 2023-2024, the Public Safety Partners have collectively made efforts to deliver first-class services to the residents of San Jose and will continue to do so over the course of fiscal year 2024-2025. The priorities you see in this slide is a sample of the objectives of which the CSA will continue to advance. This slide represents our CSA's Performance Measure Dashboard, which can also be found on page 278 of the 2024-2025 Proposed Operating Budget Book. The six identified performance measures on the dashboard are as follows. The Police Department responsiveness: Priority One measures service calls for present or imminent danger to life or major damage or loss of property. This measure includes call processing time, call queuing time, and drive time. The target for this measure is to respond within six minutes 70% of the time. The response time has decreased slightly. Next, Quality of Police Protection measures the percent of residents surveyed who rate the quality of police protection in their neighborhood as good or excellent. The Police Department's estimate for fiscal year 23-24 is anticipated to be 22%. Emergency Call for Service measures the percent of 911 calls that are answered in less than 15 seconds. The target for this measure is 90%. The Police Department is estimated to achieve a target of 82% for this year. Fire Department responsiveness measures the department's time standard for Priority One. Those are calls where we respond with red lights and sirens. Responses for an arrival of on-scene within eight minutes 80% of the time. This time standard includes call processing, turnout, and travel time segments. The response time is estimated to achieve a 66% compliance target. Quality of Fire Protection and Prevention is part of the city of San Jose's community survey that measures the percent of residents providing feedback on the quality of fire protection and prevention as good or excellent. The Fire Department anticipates a 53% estimate for this measure. Resident Household Emergency Preparedness measures the percent of residents providing a rating of household preparedness for a natural disaster of other citywide emergency as well-prepared or somewhat prepared. This measure will continue to be monitored to assess public preparedness. The total Public Safety CSA shows minimal changes in the Proposed Operating Budget for 24-25. Notably, the 1.1% change reflected in the Proposed Fire Department budget is attributable to one-time general fund dollars for furniture fixtures and equipment costs associated with Fire Station 32, including the procurement of a Type 1 engine. The 5.4 increase in the Proposed Office of Emergency Management budget is attributable to one-time general fund dollars towards emergency management planning and community resilience. The following are a few key budget actions for the Public Safety CSA. For the Fire Department, the implementation of the Ambulance Transport and User Fee Program. This program recognizes an alternative revenue stream for instances where a fire department resource provides additional support for when the county EMS system is strained and there are no available ambulances to transport a patient to the nearest emergency department. This revenue offsets the addition of one analyst position to provide administrative support for billing and collection transactions. To further invest in women's, in the recruitment of women in the Fire Department, one-time funding of $100,000 will be used to hire a consultant specializing in fire service recruitment to develop strategies to attract and hire more women into the department. For the Police Department, Police Sworn Staffing Reductions deletes 20 sworn positions, which had been approved to be included in the 2024-2025 Proposed Budget from direction provided in the 2023-24 Adopted Budget. The composition of the 20 sworn positions includes 17 police officers, two police sergeants, and one police lieutenant. This reduction on an ongoing basis is meant to achieve the department's requested savings. The Community Service Officer Staffing Proposal reorganizes the Community Service Officers, or CSO, program by deleting six senior community service officers and one supervising community service officer, while continuing to maintain the same level of service provided to the community. The Police Recruiting Proposal includes an addition of $520,000, of which $320,000 is for an officer recruiting marketing plan through radio, print, and social media, and $200,000 as one-time funding for lateral incentives programs. For the Office of Emergency Management, emergency plans and listos provide one-time funding for the development of emergency plans and contractual services to support the listos program, $75,000 each. The Public Safety CSA serves to maintain a vibrant and safe community. We do this with a collaborative approach in providing essential emergency services that meet the community's needs with a focus on the use of data analytics to inform and improve strategies. Specifically, the following service delivery strategies are anticipated to continue as we enter this upcoming fiscal year. The Fire Department will continue to provide high-quality fire suppression, rescue, emergency medical, and other related public assistance services. The Police Department's goal is maintaining the safety of residents throughout the city by keeping crime rates down, reducing and investigating crimes. We will also focus on hiring and training highly qualified officers and provide effective and timely response to calls for service. The Office of Emergency Management will continue to deliver internal trainings, enhance the CERT program, and engage in community outreach for emergency preparedness, enhancing the city's readiness for the next major event. And the Independent Police Auditor's office will continue to ensure that San Jose Police Department's investigations of police misconduct are fair, thorough, and complete. This concludes the Public Safety CSA presentation. We stand ready to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chief, and thank you all for your service to our community and that update. Why don't I turn to colleagues for questions and comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Foley.
Thank you, Chief, for that presentation and Assistant, or Interim Chief, or whatever your title is, Chief Joseph, and our new IPA, who's in the box as well. I appreciate you all for being here. I have, most of my questions actually are focused on the Police Department. There's a proposal of lowering the target for police emergency response on primary priority calls from 70% to 60%. Can you explain why that is? What, why we're reducing the, our number, our target goal?
I think it's just an acknowledgement that we're consistently not hitting that number and that possibly that number is just not a realistic expectation for us. Obviously, we want to get to everything as quickly as possible, and that's always dependent on all the activities that are occurring in the city at any given time, traffic flows, how many officers are available to go to something. You know, it's, it's, it's a fluctuating number, but- You know, it's a fluctuating number, but if we're consistently not getting there, then it's possible we're just, it's not reasonable.
Okay, I appreciate that. So the goal is being reduced, or the target is, because clearly that's not our capacity at this time, and we need more officers to increase our, decrease our response time and meet the 70% target.
That's certainly the direction we're trying to go.
Oh, yeah. Okay, very good.
Councilmember Foley, Jennifer.
Yes, ma'am.
I actually, as you go through the budget, I've actually asked staff to get more realistic with our performance measures and dashboards, and we actually did a deep, deep dive on them this year because I felt it was misleading with the resources that we have and also, so we can see where we need to get to. I wanted to recalibrate some of them, and so that's what you're going to be seeing throughout this budget document. Because I think they have not had the hard look that we should have had, especially during those years of COVID. And so that's why we're revamping and redoing all of our performance measures and taking a harder look at them.
Well, I think it's important, actually, to reassess our target goals. And if they're too high, or they were grabbed for some reason that sounded like a good political strategy or a good way to look at things, but if we're never consistently meeting them, then it makes sense to reduce them. However, aspirationally, we want to make sure that we staff public safety to the highest level we can so that we are getting the responses that we needed at a quicker time when our residents call on a 911 priority. So I, thank you for, whoops, both of you for that explanation. I appreciate it. Great. And my other question just went off the screen. Okay. I'm curious about the community service officers' realignment in removing the supervisor position and folding it into the Police Department. How is, why is that being recommended, and how is that going to work? It just, it seems that we're taking people who are supervising the CSOs currently and keeping them as CSOs but not supervising. So who's going to supervise on PD's side, and what will change? How will we see that the service will be maintained?
So we actually believe this is going to lead to better service because it's going to immediately bring five more CSOs online and get us to full staffing of authorized budgeted CSOs. The CSOs will still be supervised, they'll simply be supervised by the existing patrol sergeants. And that's a very, we think that's a good operational change. There was some redundancy with the CSO seniors. There's nothing that a CSO does that a police officer doesn't also do, so there's no reason that a police sergeant cannot supervise a CSO. And so we think that the work, we think that it'll actually be more streamlined. Again, it'll get us to immediate, almost immediate full staffing of our CSOs, get us to deploy CSOs into the downtown core for the walking patrols. So we actually like the change operationally, and it also is going to help us with the needed budget reduction.
So will that, so what you're saying is it'll help make the CSO position more effective? Because you'll have more CSO officers in the field, per se?
Yes, there'll be more line-level CSOs to do the work of a CSO. We believe the patrol sergeants are fully capable, both, obviously, skill set-wise, but bandwidth-wise as well, of supervising the CSOs. It's just like having one more police officer on your patrol team. So again, the work is exactly the same, I would say they're like police officer light. You know, they do the things a police officer does minus the enforcement portion. So I think it makes operational sense.
And will that allow you to utilize the CSO more strategically? As has been suggested through the Real Coalition and other ways to sort of take away always having someone with a badge and a gun respond to a call? Will that allow, free up the CSOs to do more of that work?
So I think that's an area that we're going to continue to explore. I think there's a lot of opportunities to have someone other than a sworn police officer handle certain calls for service. Whether that's a CSO or not is always dependent on exactly the situation. But I will tell you this, there is plenty of work for CSOs. I wish I had three times as many. So the more, just of the work that they do currently. Any additions to their role is potentially something also we would have to negotiate with both their union and the Police Officers Association. But just suffice to say, there's plenty of work to go around. We're happy to have these seniors in the line-level CSO assignment.
Okay, great. Not to belabor the CSO, but I have one more question. Last year, we approved funding for a bike patrol for the downtown area for CSOs. But my understanding is that hasn't been implemented. Can someone explain what's going on, why not, and do we have plans to get it going?
Yes, so they will actually be walking as opposed to biking, but they will be in the downtown core focusing on that area. And the only reason it hasn't been implemented fully is we just weren't fully staffed at the position. We have been deploying CSOs into the downtown core on a voluntary overtime basis. But again, moving these five CSO seniors back to line level is going to get us to the point where we'll be deploying some, if not all, of the downtown officer, CSOs as soon as this takes effect.
Okay, that sounds like a good strategy. Thank you. A couple more questions regarding the Police Cadet Program. How is it, or is it similar to the program over at San Jose State?
I'm somewhat familiar with their program, not familiar enough to give a comparison. But I can tell you what we would like to do is, so right now, we have PAL cadets who are volunteers, young people who volunteer, you know, they perform some services for the Police Department, but really, it's a way to familiarize them with a career in law enforcement, hopefully interest them in someday applying to be San Jose Police Officers. What we want to do is have sort of a bridge between the PAL cadets who are volunteers, and many of them are not old enough yet to be police officers, and provide a paying job which can actually do some functions within the Police Department, but also hopefully keep them in the fold, if you will, keep them interested, and eventually draw them into wanting to apply to be sworn police officers.
Great, thank you. Can you, I'm checking my time, so I may have to come back to you. Can you tell me how many officers we have currently in the Traffic Enforcement Unit?
I believe it's, I believe it's 18. 14 officers, three sergeants, and a lieutenant. I can't get the exact number for you, but it's right in that neighborhood.
And I know we funded, or we had authorization to fund a lot more than that a couple budgets ago, as I recall. Are we working to fill more of those Traffic Enforcement Unit positions? Because frankly, our communities, we hear complaints or concerns all the time about traffic enforcement around our schools in particular. And the more police officers we have out, we know that if they sit over by a school, that they're going to cause parents, mostly moms and dads dropping their kids off, admitted moms and dads, we know what's happening from speeding through a school. So are, is it, are we still focusing on increasing the number of Traffic Enforcement officers?
Before the Acting Chief chimes in here, on page 658 and 659 of the budget, it does have the authorized positions per program. So on top of 659, just for the whole audience and the council to know, we are budgeted for 30 Traffic Enforcement positions. So he can talk about how, as we fill up our vacancies, how he's going to get from that 18 to the 30. But we do have 30 allocated to the Traffic Enforcement Unit. So Chief, take it away.
Thank you. So we have budgeted but unfilled positions, you know, all throughout the department, obviously. And it's a constant balancing act to ensure that we have, first of all, we need to maintain a minimum number of officers in the Patrol Division because there need to be a minimum number that are available each and every day. If we don't have enough assigned to patrol, then we have to supplement that with overtime. And as you know, overtime has also been an issue for us. At the same time, if we don't staff the specialized assignments such as Traffic Enforcement Unit enough, then they're not effective. And so we're constantly trying to keep the specialized units afloat while keeping enough people in patrol to not have to rely too much on overtime to simply meet minimum staffing requirements. It's a very difficult balance, but we're continually assessing that.
Yes, and I thank you for that. We know that public safety is the number-one issue in this city that our residents are concerned about. So how you deploy the resources that you have really is up to you and your department to figure out the best way to utilize the men and women that you have working underneath you. So I defer to your expertise. I do get a lot of questions about the Traffic Enforcement Unit when we're out and about, so it's always good to have those numbers in our back pocket to understand what they are. But I do see my time is up. Thank you very much for your response, and I may have other questions later. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Good questions. We do have a lot of hands up, so we'll keep moving here. Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to our great staff here in the box for your work on this report. As everyone in this room knows, public safety is a major priority for our residents and of course, our council members as well. So appreciate your diligence and the service of our first responders who risk their safety every day. Many residents, and we had some here yesterday, have been concerned about not seeing the alternative response staff in the operating budget. And although it's not included just yet, I wanted to highlight how investments in funding a alternative response such as the trust team has demonstrated its worth. Clinicians and social workers serve as alternative first responders, addressing individuals experiencing a mental health crisis or substance abuse issue, and releasing pressure off our already-challenged police and sheriff's departments. While the results of this approach have been promising, there are currently four trust teams that respond to North County, South County, West Valley City, and a Campbell team that we share that also responds to the City of San Jose's calls. Therefore, I wanted to clarify with Jim, although it's not included in the operating budget and in Attachment B of Council referrals, will we see an MBA come forward from our request to fund another trust team?
So I'll take that, Councilmember. Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager. Yes, we had anticipated getting that out last night for today's conversation, so that'll come out hopefully this week. We've been working with County Behavioral Health on a cost estimate. The cost estimate from County Behavioral Health, just so you know, was very high, you know, north of $5 million. So we've elevated that as of yesterday afternoon to the County Executive's Office to figure out different options and how you augment the existing teams so that the council has options to think through as part of that. So that we didn't just slap that down in front of you last night. We're going to take some additional time, but that'll be coming out in the next several days.
No, really appreciate that, and thank you for providing options. I'm sure that a $5 million price tag is nothing to play with, so we got to make sure that our decisions are made intentionally. For our next question, I just wanted to get some clarification on the budget changes by city service area. On page 773, it says that the Safe Summer Initiative Grant Program will have a reduction of 10%, and that this action equates to a reduction of approximately six nonprofit agencies and 417 participants served during the summer months. Obviously, that's a major concern for me because I value the support we provide to our youth, especially our system-impacted youth. However, the department will seek to mitigate a portion of this loss of service by redirecting impacted participants to other programs. That's what it says in the language. Wanted to ask, could staff explain how they plan to redirect impacted participants to other programs? And if the programs that they are being redirected to are other SSIG programs as well?
Councilmember, if I could just jump in, if you wouldn't mind holding that question until we get to the Neighborhood Services CSA? I think that would be the best time to answer that question.
Okay, all right. I'll hold that question for later. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. We'll go over to Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. I truly appreciate and grateful that we have a stellar Police Department and Fire Department. Thank you for the report. I know that it was sad recently that two of our officers got shot, and please send my, you know, condolences and concern for their family. I do have a question for the Police Department. Is there a plan to incorporate drones to supplement or helicopter? Because I know that we only have one helicopter. So when that helicopter is down for maintenance or rebuild, I would imagine we still need, you know, eye in the sky. Is there a plan for that?
So Councilmember, I, we are absolutely looking at every possible technology solution to help us deal with a staffing shortage and just the need to be working smarter and more efficiently at all times. Currently, we do have a robust drone program. We do not have what some police departments refer to as a drones-as-first-responder program as of yet. And so, without getting too much in the weeds, the drones that we have now have to be operated through line of sight, so the officer needs to be close to the area in which he's operating the drone. And we do use them to great effect. They've helped us in a number of cases. They've increased officer safety. They've allowed us to safely take people into custody who are armed even, because it gives us that perspective that you mentioned. We definitely want to explore the idea of the drones-as-first-responder, which is a drone that can be situated remotely throughout the city. It doesn't have to be operated in line of sight, and it does some of the things that our air support unit does. It doesn't do them all, but it does some, and it does more than the drone program we currently have. So yes, everything is on the table in terms of technology, and we just need to make sure that we, that the solution makes sense for us. But nothing concrete at this time.
And then can you tell me about the fixed-wing program? Will that help more efficient timeline to catch a criminal? Will it give us a better view from the sky?
So a fixed-wing aircraft will do many of the same things that a helicopter will do. It will also do some things that a helicopter cannot do, such as operate at a higher altitude and for longer periods of time. And this has been, this has been a difficult topic. There's a tremendous outlay initially to purchase more aircraft, and so that is really the point where we haven't advanced that program at this time.
Thank you. I have a question, several questions for our Fire Chief. Good morning.
Good morning.
Is there a plan for you to have a dedicated recruitment personnel from the Fire Department to not only recruit towards having more women firefighters and our paramedic? And I know that it is extremely difficult at this point where we compete with many other city and states for our paramedics.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. I'll start with the operating budget outcomes. This year, we do not have additional personnel scheduled into the operating budget. However, working back from that, we do have a proposal that focuses some money on consultant services so that we can begin to understand where to best invest dollars when it comes to recruitment of women. Secondly, we have, over the last few fiscal years, enhanced our HR unit, that is a civilian HR unit, to give us better bandwidth on keeping up with recruitment, but also leveraging other programs that we've enhanced, including our Public Information Office that allows us to reach the community in ways that we couldn't previously. And so it is an area of focus. However, to directly answer your question, we do not have staff additions in this budget.
Thank you. I remember in year 2000, when I came on, we have approximately 40 female firefighters, and I think that number has been decreased over time. Is that correct?
I believe, if my recollection is correct, I think our peak number was 43. And I think we're today at 24, and we have not kept up, frankly, with attrition over the last, I believe, few years, I think going back to 2018-19. Over the last, I believe, few years, I think going back to 2018, 19, we've been hiring at a rate of about 7.8%. Those are women who have graduated from our academy, so fully recruited and trained, which is above the average, but it's not keeping up with that attrition. So I think we do have some work to do to really focus efforts on recruitment there.
Regarding Station 33, I know that they are working towards Phase 3. The citizen up in Com Hill would like Station 33 to reopen. Do you have a timeline on that?
I do not have a timeline for development on Station 33. The key piece that I think is interesting for the fire department would be road access across the railroad tracks down to Kurtner. And once that's open, that becomes a pretty valuable resource for us because that valley area there is a pretty busy spot for us. The challenge with focusing resources at Station 33 right now is that, as I evaluate response areas across the city, the actual footprint response area for Station 33 is responsible for a very low number of our late responses, and we have parts of the city that, that struggle, where we struggle to meet response times with much higher call volume. And so it really, for us, from a strategic perspective, we would want that road access to make that resource more effective to help us with our response time challenges.
Thank you. And I know that some of our response station is extremely busy, and we used to have dual company in those stations. Well, we're looking to somewhere down in the future to re-implement the dual company within the station?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think that's correct in different ways across the city. Certainly, post-recession, near 2011, 2012, we did reduce stations. That is when Fire Station 33 closed. We also had opened Fire Station 35 in South San Jose, and we moved Truck Company out of Station 18. We eliminated Truck 3 at Fire Station 3, and we began to cross-staff the hit unit at Station 29. And so all of that has resulted in fewer dual-company houses. We did make some progress since then by adding the two-person squads that are now called rescue medics, and so we have done some adjusting there. And on the horizon, we are looking to build Fire Station 32 as a two-company house, hopefully to get to strengthen our deployment in that part of town as well.
Thank you. The last question I have for you is regarding MED 30. The invaluable service for MED 30 from being first-on scene to take care of our firefighters and many other function that MED 30 is responsible for. Last fiscal year, we fought to keep MED 30 alive. Is there a plan to continue with the MED 30? And if so, give us a little bit, what is your plan?
Thank you, Councilmember. So this year's operating budget does not propose or include retention of MED 30. As you recall, in fiscal year 2324, we had to make a very difficult trade-off, which was the addition of Battalion 35 to address command and control and firefighter safety issues. It was the circumstance that the least impactful trade-off for that, for the cost of that battalion was MED 30. Over the last year, with funding extended to further evaluate, we have proceeded with refining our plan for the elimination of that resource by way of assigning duties to other areas. My direction to staff has been to work to achieve an as-good-or-better approach to the functions that MED 30 previously provided or will stop providing at the end of the fiscal year. So that is really what the plan is, is to make sure that the bases are covered relative to the services provided by that unit on an ongoing basis, but the operating budget right now does not propose continuation.
Thank you very much, Chief. My time is out, but I know that MED 30 had functioned as a safety officer, providing oversight on all of our paramedics inside the fire department to comply with the county protocols and, you know, expired drugs and so on. So I would hope some, you would rethink and perhaps find ways to keep our MED 30 alive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilor Khan?
Thank you. Thank you all for the presentation. I'm going to try to keep this quick. I think we need to be aware of our time since we're so far behind schedule. First question, it was alarming to see the public survey results that say that 27% of people are satisfied with public safety response. You know, I think we can all speculate as to what the reasons are, maybe if there's, anybody have any thoughts about what we might, might be some of the key drivers that we can address that might be able to improve that feeling amongst our constituents?
So I think, I didn't like that number too much either, Councilmember. I think that number was directed at the police department. The fires number was better. I don't know exactly what that number is getting at. In other words, are people saying, hey, we think the police are doing a really good job, we just wish there were more of them? Or are they saying, you know, the job you're doing isn't very good? I don't really know what that number means. And so I'd like to be optimistic and say that, you know, given how well we police a city, given the number of police officers we have per thousand people, I think, I think we're doing a very good job. I think we're doing a job that most people, I don't think only 22% would think that with what we have, we're doing a poor job. I think perhaps that number reflects they would just like to see more police officers. One of the comments I get most frequently is, I'd love to see police officers just walking around my neighborhood or just driving around my neighborhood. And when we have low staffing, they have less free patrol time, and those things are hard to achieve. So I would suspect that that's a big driver of that low number.
Yeah, I think so, too. I mean, I think our residents expect that when there's a window, a car break-in or some kind of smash-and-grab or something small, that police are going to show up when they report it. And obviously, I don't think any of us necessarily have that expectation that that can happen all the time. And I think there's a PR problem in terms of the way we communicate with our residents as well. And I do, I do think it's important for us to send the message you just said, which is for the staffing we have, we do an incredibly good job, and maybe to do more to tout and publicize our successes, and also not necessarily to kind of repeat the message to the public that, you know, we would do more if, we would do more if, because that causes people to think that somebody is holding back the police department in San Jose. And I think it's really important for us to, to express how well we are doing, and maybe also make the point that our, our response is not necessarily different than what you get at any city, because these kinds of things happen, and we may be having some data that shows people comparisons from city to city as well. So just something to think about as we move forward. One quick question, I think this one's for Jim, actually, on the budget. You know, for the last couple of years, I've been talking about this amount of money we're spending on overtime. You and I had this conversation, and Bonnie, when we were in our one-on-one meeting on the budget. I just kind of wanted to maybe have that, repeat it briefly for the sake of everybody else. There is a point at which, when we staff up our police department, we can begin to claw back some of that overtime spending, and therefore, growing the police department doesn't cost us more out of the general fund, it's just about using money that we already are spending on our services. Are there, when we had that conversation, you remember how that, what your response was about when that might be occurring and what we can expect to save going forward?
Well, I think that, yeah, thank you for the question, Jim Shannon, City's Budget Director. The, the amount of money that police is spending on overtime right now is being backfilled by a large extent to the number of vacant sworn positions that they have. So the amount of overtime spending you see is very, very high, but the fact that they're generally within their budget is because there's vacancies that they're backfilling against. So it does cost a little bit more, though, to do work on overtime than it does for a filled position. So as those positions get filled, so the overall sort of net cost needed to perform the service does sort of go down broadly. But, but you'd hopefully also see a higher level of service because you have more officers there to be performing the work. So, you know, as the police department gets to a more of a full staffing complement, I think then you can be at the point where we can reevaluate what the ongoing overtime is going to be needed for the department. But I think Jennifer wants to get in.
The ongoing overtime amount is for a fully-staffed department at this juncture. The additional amount of overtime that's being spent is being funded by those vacancy savings. So as we fill up the, as we fill up the vacancies, that overtime, that should start coming down, so we hopefully can get a balance to what we have an ongoing amount of overtime is actually being spent, and we're not spending the additional overtime with, using the vacancy savings to fund that.
Right. There's a baseline level of overtime we have to spend based on the way the police department operates. There's this excess, but I think it's important to make sure that it's clear to people watching the budget that when we talk about staffing up our police department, it's not talking about taking money out of our general fund and shifting it over. We're already spending that money backfilling services because we have vacancies.
Yeah, so we have, we have all of our positions funded, so in order to expand the department, that's when we're going to have to hit into more general fund resources. When, you know, when we add the 15 officers per year, that's when we will have an additional cost to the general fund.
But we're still pretty far short of that.
But we're not there yet because we need to fill up our vacancies first. Yes.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate you clarifying that point. Councilor Batra?
Thank you for providing the safety of the city in both fire and police, and putting your life on the line every day. So my big gratitude and the gratitude of the community. I want to pick up, Chief, from where Councilmember Dawn left. Last year, we did have the MED 30 on the reduction line, but we asked at that time that let's get the reorganization take hold where the people who are supposed to pick up the activity which MED 30 does and demonstrate or win the confidence of everybody that, yes, that activity has been picked up properly under the reorganization. If that has not happened yet, we would like you to consider having that activity still continue on while you build this capability in the other group or the people who are responsible or going to be responsible for providing equally good care. Okay? And only cut this thing off once we have proven that the reorganization has successfully taken place.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, I think, ultimately, I think what we end up is at a bit of an impasse because we have to start at some point, right? And so we have what I think is an effective plan to pick up the duties and responsibilities of MED 30. However, we've continued through, through some special funding to, to keep the program staff through the year, so we have not had that transition. But there will have to be a point in time where, where it shifts. And I, I think that impasse is such that, as I said before, this was not an easy trade-off. This was a difficult trade-off. MED 30 brings tremendous value to our system. It is unique in that it is the only utility resource in the city that is not tied to a geographical area, and we can assign it, frankly, anything that comes up, it steps in and does a lot of unique things for us. But ultimately, the authorized positions in the budget become what, what drive our business, and if, if it is included as an ongoing resource, then, then we make no changes and we keep moving forward. If it's not, then we have to make that adjustment and, you know, really make it work as best we can.
Yeah, and I know it's not, not an easy or lightly-made decision, but I'd like you to consider if there are ways so that you make this transition a very smooth one and more effective than probably what we had before. So leave it with that. Please do consider, there are people very concerned about it, and we would like to give it as real a thought as we can. Okay? So, thanks.
I will take that, Council. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And I want to address the change which is being made about the CERT training. You're going to be reducing the contractors who provide the training for the CERT. And as we know that in order for this city to be better prepared, we still need to increase the total number of CERTs available, even though in my district, we get about 130, which is the highest number compared to any district. When you are going to be changing this changeover from the training, it would be, I'm sure you have considered it, but I just want to bring it up for you, that normally you would want to get Train the Trainers kind of training done so that you're not dependent on people who have not gone through that extensive training, prepared for actually providing the training. You don't depend on those, and the quality of training goes down, and hence, we have a difficulty recruiting these people for CERT. So with that input, I would suggest that if you want to comment on it, how you're making this transition, I know you're trying to do a cost reduction. Okay? So...
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers. Really great question. The CERT program, as you know, is a very important part of our toolbox as we engage the community in our, our goal to become more resilient, and that really includes the residents here in San Jose. I would say, as you have probably already surmised, that yes, we are in challenging times and have to make adjustments to reflect that. It is part of our longtime strategy, looking forward, you know, in future years, to transition to a more community-based program. What we're doing right now is helping build that program to get it to a place where it's more sustainable, and we will be bringing in Train the Trainer programs once we have sufficient members and coverage around the city to meet the needs of the city to keep evolving the CERT program. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Thank you. Chief, as you have heard from Councilmember Pam Foley, traffic safety, especially traffic safety around the schools, is a huge concern for everybody, you, me, the community, especially when in District 10, recently, near Taylor Elementary School, one of the children got hurt. Okay? I'd like to see something coming out in this budget message that we are really driving towards improving our traffic safety. We know we don't have enough police to do the enforcement. We are going to get a little bit of a help from the speed cameras, monitoring. I'd like to get some stronger message coming out that how you're really going to beef up the traffic safety, especially traffic safety around the schools. And, you know, I have never gone to a meeting where people, the same ones who are probably doing the speeding, complaining about the speeding of everybody else. Okay? So give us some magical answer to that one, Chief, and make some magic happen in this budget.
I will do my best. Just also to go back to Councilmember Foley's question, we are authorized for 30 total people in the traffic enforcement unit. I said 18. We actually have 19. We have one lieutenant, three sergeants, and 15 officers. So one more officer than I, than I had stated. And we do a lot of things to try to be creative with that staffing. You know, when school starts back up, we do deploy our traffic enforcement unit and our patrol units out around the schools because we know that driving patterns, people get accustomed to school being out for the summer, and then they, you know, we want to make sure that they're aware that school's back in, they need to drive more carefully. You mentioned the red light cameras, the speed cameras, some of those other things that we do. And, you know, I know another part of Vision Zero is engineering changes to maybe make the roadways themselves safer. So we are trying to address traffic safety from a number of different angles.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember, if I could also say, there is a Safe Routes to School program in the Transportation Department that you might want to check out when we get into that next on page 739 of the budget document, looking
on page 739 of the budget document, looking at putting traffic safety improvements at thirty-five schools per year for the next eight or so years.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make a quick comment with the time running out here. I think aligning targets with what we are able to achieve, I'm not sure that that is the best thing in the world to do, because the targets are set for some reason, that that is the kind of quality of work we wanted to provide. If we are not able to meet those, I understand we have staffing issues and all that. I would rather leave those targets to be there as aspirational targets and not reduce the target because we want to make the targets look equal to what we have achieved. And so I know our city manager made the requirement that you want the targets to be more achievable. I would rather leave the targets to be aspirational and not try to make them what we are able to achieve so that we can look that we achieved the target. So targets are there for a different reason than what needs to be looking at that they are achieved, okay?
I just want to pipe in. So we, we want to have our targets to match our budget allocation, so we're being realistic with the community, but with that, they do need to have aspirational qualities, but within reason. So that's what I've, I've asked them to do, to be more specific.
Thank you.
And look, I think it's an important discussion. I appreciate the point. I, I think there, there's an important kernel in there that you're making around, we don't want to lower our standards just because we don't have the staffing levels we need. I think part of the exercise in the ongoing conversation we need to have is really around prioritization, you know, which, which metrics matter most. And I think, to your point, Councilmember, one thing we should look at certainly is comparisons to other cities we think offer relevant benchmarks. And I do, I do think it's, it's, we don't simply want to set these in a vacuum based on the resources we happen to have. There is also an exercise of prioritization, looking at other benchmarks. It's certainly, we need to, we need to take in many different data points. But I also think, to our city manager's point, it is not helpful to consistently say, here's where we plan to be and just be off significantly and not be realistic with the community about the level of service we can provide. So anyway, longer conversation, but I, I do appreciate your point. Okay, in the interest of time, we're going to move over to our Vice Mayor, Kame.
Thank you. And what I will say is what a difference a year makes. Last year during budget time, one of the things that I had mentioned as all of the CSAs come forward is, you know, that I would ask, what are you doing differently, right? And definitely, you know, in terms of having a new IPA, having a wonderful facility for emergency responses and, you know, it, it, it just makes a big difference. And, you know, having interim police chief and, you know, certainly, I really do appreciate the look into increasing women in the fire department as well as women in the police department. So a lot has happened, a lot has happened. And I think that we've come a long way since last year, but we continue to have challenges. And I have a couple of questions on the redistricting results and recommendations that may be coming forward. I know that we're still in the process, but I was just wondering in terms of this budget, will this budget take into consideration any recommendations coming out of the police redistricting process?
No, I don't believe so because we don't have the completed report yet. We were working with the consultant to finish the report and to be able to present it to you, to the council, and, and to offer our thoughts on what their findings are. But we do, we are optimistic and hopeful that they will find some efficiencies or some changes we can make, some things we can do to address some of the, some of the issues such as response times.
Okay, so then we would probably not see anything until next year in terms of implementation of any of the recommendations?
We may implement some recommendations, but I don't think this budget contains anything that is specific to that consultant's report as, since it's not completed.
Okay, okay, fair enough, fair enough. Okay, thank you. I also wanted to know, following on Councilmember Batra's question on CERT, my understanding was in order to increase the number of those who are participating in CERT, there was going to be an online program. Is that still the case for this next coming year?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, we are very close to the deployment of that program. We're just working out details with logistics of how that would work. Obviously, it would be very different from the in-person, hands-on course, making sure that we maintain the standards that we've achieved. And we are getting very good comments from the region of the actual performance of the CERTs that we have here in the city as compared to other jurisdictions. That was recently brought up to me by an observer who was involved with multi-jurisdictional events. So I think we have a really good training program, and we want to maintain those standards and, and not, for the ease of having an online course, have those diminish.
Great, great. I, I think that that will help a lot, and especially if you're able to have them in different languages, that I think that, you know, we can kind of like work on that together. I look forward to seeing what that's going to look like, because I think that we can have the in-person, but we could also augment by having this additional, which I think is really great. And just, you know, transitioning to a community-based program, it also can bridge to communities that perhaps have not been engaged at all. So I think that that's a great idea, and anything that I can do to help, support, advocate for, or, or anything like that, I think that emergency response is critically important. You always think, well, I don't ever want to use it, but when you need it, you really need it. So it's, 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 it's really a very important thing. And then, lastly, I just want to say thank you so much to Chief Sapien, because I think that it is important to at least begin to figure out what might be some pathways to have more women recruited into the, the fire department. I know that we made the commitment with, with Police Department to have the initiative Thirty by Thirty, and I think that that's an aspirational goal, but I also think that it is something in which we're going to try to learn from others as well. So I was glad to see that, you know, there are efforts in that direction, so I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilor Torres.
Good morning. Thank you. I should click that button a little bit more quickly for the next time. Quick question. This is for our police chief. The, so crossing guards. How are, how are crossing guards determined and placed in our city?
They're placed based on availability. Those are, you know, part-time positions, and they're not, they're not all filled. You know, we would certainly love to have more of them. I, I can't tell you the exact, exact strategy by which each school that is selected. I would imagine it's based on traffic patterns and volume. I, I don't have that information. I'm not sure anybody here on my staff does have that specific, but I can get you that.
And I wait for somebody to, I don't know if anybody's going to come down, but if they don't, myself...
There's a, there's a, there's a safety index for intersections, but is there anybody from transportation in the audience? No, we can get any more.
Okay, no, it's okay. So myself and, and Councilmember Ortiz had a meeting with Rocket Ship Elementary Schools. They're a charter school, traditionally, not a, not a, not a traditional public school. And I think one of their complaints was that they don't have crossing guards in front of their, in front of their school. And so, you know, that's, these schools, you know, although, you know, different than traditional public schools, are public schools, but they also have their own set of unfortunate concerns, right? There's a lot of traffic happening in front of these schools. There's been saying, there's some, there've been some fatalities in front of their schools. So definitely, definitely want to make sure that, that we, we get our folks connected from Rocket Ship to the Police Department to, to either ask for or request crossing guards for those, for those schools. So that's the reason why, the reason why I asked, so.
Yeah, we, I'll follow up with you, Councilmember, on that.
Okay, cool. And then the, the, the other one is, I got a couple more questions. I hopefully not take all my fifteen minutes, just kidding. The other question is, as, as you know, this past March, Prop 1 barely passed, right? What are the, the implications if, if we don't, if we can't fund a, a trust team? I know that our San Jose Police Department has gotten better when it comes to responding to a mental health crisis for any individual, any individual, regardless if they're unsheltered or not. What are the implications of Prop 1 on MCAT?
Well, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what, in, in terms of how they operate, in terms of what...
Well, when, when, during the debate, I did, I think that was one of the concerns from our county is that, is, is programs like, like MCAT, MCAT are going to be underfunded, but I'm, I'm assuming MCAT is funded through us, right? We don't get any special funding for MCAT at all, right?
That, that's correct. MCAT is, is fully funded through the Police Department, and Proposition 1 would have no effect.
Okay. And then the, the, the other one is, I attended, I attended a, a focus group meeting yesterday for the Western Division, and I do know that we do these, I seen the, I see the surveys. I, sometimes I don't like reading the surveys because, you know, it tells us that either the city of San Jose, or downtown especially, is very unsafe for everyone. And so, you know, I, I take it with a, with a grain of salt. I know we have concerns. I know that there's little pockets in downtown San Jose in our city that still experience crime. But in general, we, we, thanks, thanks to our Police Department and our Fire Department, we're a very safe city. So at yesterday, yesterday's meeting, are we, are we doing these focus groups? Or what's, what's the, I, I was there as, as an elected official, and I was kind of a little bit baffled, like, why are we doing these, these focus groups? Is it because of redistricting, or?
I, so, Councilmember, I believe what you're referring to is council directed us to hire a consultant to work on, with the Police Department on its community engagement efforts, generally speaking. And so I believe the meeting that you attended last night is part of that effort.
Okay, good. So, so these focus groups are going to help us with...
They, the consultant was directed to look at our overall community engagement efforts and find ways in which we can be more effective, more communicative, more responsive to the needs and the desires of the community. And so part of that is gathering information from the community at meetings like the one that you attended last night.
Okay, great. So, and then the, the, the other one is, is I think kind of a, I'm not going to say it's a controversial question, but, and I'm not at all, you know, bashing it, but we, so our downtown walking beat is, is that secondary employment for, for SJPD?
So all of the walking beats are funded through overtime. We don't have the staffing to make those full-time positions. That's, that's somewhere we would like to be at, at a certain point. We just don't have, you know, when I talked about that balance of, you know, making sure that we have enough people in patrol so that we're not using an abundance of overtime just to meet our minimum staffing requirements versus funding all these other different positions within the department, that, that is one that presently we are funding through overtime.
Okay, so, so what's the difference between overtime and secondary unit employment?
So overtime is money that the city is paying, San Jose Police Officers, to work at a specific task. Secondary employment is an opportunity for private entities to hire a San Jose Police, Police Officer who is off-duty, but who can appear in uniform to provide security services and be paid by the outside employer.
Okay, so I, I think that's where some of our folks get a little bit confused. I know, so I took a tour of Team San Jose during one of these public dances, and there were folks out in front of the, of the convention center that were selling alcohol. I know we have some, you know, street vendors trying to sell their tacos or their hot dogs, but these street vendors were just selling alcohol, right? They were, that's all they were doing. They literally set up a table and were selling shots or buzz balls, and folks from Team San Jose said that the cops that were there, our police officers that were there, were second unit, second unit officers, and that our second unit officers couldn't do anything about the folk selling alcohol.
I'm not sure that's how it should have been explained, and I can, that's a kind of a specific situation, which, if you're okay with it, I'd rather just talk offline with you, but I...
Yeah, absolutely.
Secondary employment officers have full law enforcement powers when they're on duty, and they obviously are being hired for a specific purpose, but that doesn't mean that they aren't available to address something that's occurring right in front of them.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chief, because there, there have been other organizations like Chris's in the Park, Music in the Park, Music in the Park, yeah, Music in the Park, and other organizations that do hire secondary units, and they've been told by the, the secondary, and of course, not trying to throw our SJPD under the, under the, under the bus, but they have been told by some, some of the folks on duty, saying that, I'm just, I'm just here to make sure that no chaos happens in your event, and if a crime takes place across the street, I really can't do, I can't do anything about it. I'm, I'm just here for the event, and that's it. And so that's, that's what they've been told. So, you know, we can definitely talk offline about that.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Okay, we'll go to Councilman Candelaus next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who's, who's in the box for, for the, this CSA study session. I, my question pertains to the, I guess this is probably for Jim, on the, the liquidation of some reserves. For example, a million dollars for the police equipment replacement sinking fund and the new traffic infrastructure. No, well, that's for transportation, but the other one for, for this CSA would be on the new police facilities maintenance and operations. So walk me through the, the, the purpose of these sinking funds and, and, you know, the potential impact to these liquidation, to these actions.
Yeah, thank you for the, for the question. So as, as part of the, the forecast and the base, the base budget process, we have in, embedded in there the cost anticipated to operate new facilities that have been recently constructed, and so that's the, the, what's it, what's the name of it? The...
New police facility.
Yeah, the, the new police facilities reserve. So I think, for example, that one was for, the new police facilities reserve was for, I think, the 911 Center, I believe? And so there, I'm sorry, that one was for the, the police hangar. So there are operating costs related to the opening of the, of the police hangar. We anticipated those costs as part of the, the base budget. It's not in Police Department's budget per se as part of the, the base, and we set that funding aside in, in the reserve, and then we add that funding to the Police Department's budget, and then we offset that cost by liquidating the, the reserve. So it's a net neutral action in, in the proposal, since we've already assumed that cost is part of, of, of the base. Similarly, for both in the Fire Department and the Police Department, we set aside in a safety equipment reserve, a million dollars in the Police Department, five hundred thousand dollars in the Fire Department for the same purpose. So we know that there's public safety equipment that we need to replace on an annual basis, and remember, we're trying to have that be a sinking fund and increase that slowly year over, year, over year. So we set aside those funding as part of the base, and then you'll see proposals in both the Police Department and the Fire Department's budget that allocates funding to their budget to replace those equipment, and then we offset that by reducing the, the reserve.
Got, okay. I suspected they were offsetting actions, but, but thank you for reaffirming that. And then, real quick, I know we're, we're running long here on, in this session, but specifically, I wanted to just call out the sideshow in traffic enforcement investments that are in the proposed budget. I know that's something that's, I, I hear about constantly, and, and that overtime funding going towards our, our officers, whether it's traffic enforcement or other, to do, to do enforcement is key. And I, I'm hoping that we can tag-team that or partner with our Transportation Department or DOT to, to find some, some solutions beyond, you know, the reactive nature. or partner with our transportation department or DOT to, to find some, some solutions beyond, you know, the reactive nature of having to go out there and do some enforcement. But I, I just wanted to call attention to that, uh, to that investment that we're making. And, and hopefully, we do get our, uh, traffic enforcement unit fully staffed, and, and I have no doubts in your ability, uh, chief, uh, to, to, to do that. So anyways, um, that's, that's pretty much the, the questions that I have. I, I can go for longer, but I, with respect to time, we'll, we'll just keep this rolling. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilor Candela's. I thought I had another hand up, but I'm not seeing it, so I'll, I'll ask just a couple of questions, and then maybe we can move on. Um, thank you all again for, uh, the report, really helpful. Uh, wanted to just touch on a couple of items. First is around, uh, recruitment and diversifying our public safety departments. As you saw in my March message, that's something I certainly feel strongly about. Um, and while we, we do have extremely diverse staffing at, at City Hall, I think it's, it's pretty clear that, that we need to put some special effort into gender diversity in our public safety departments. I was excited to see the ongoing funding for a women's boot camp for the police department, and I wanted to just get a little more detail on what, if any, trends we're seeing around upcoming academies. If you have any, uh, gender-related data for, uh, SJ forty-eight, forty-nine, that may be premature. Um, and then just any thinking around the boot camp, how we expand it, how it's, um, how it's gonna feed into diversifying our, our police department?
Thank you. So, obviously, our first, our first goal is to interest women in even considering a career in law enforcement, frankly, interest anybody in considering that career. I mean, it's a tough, tough challenge right now. Uh, and tradition, you know, traditionally, law enforcement is not, um, is under, women are underrepresented in the field, as I would imagine they are in, in the fire service. So-
Yeah, I'll get to that one next, but-
So, I think both departments are, you know, working very hard to, uh, interest women in it at all through our recruitment efforts and our outreach efforts. Uh, I noticed that Acting Deputy Chief Todd Trere is, uh, in the starting blocks here, and, and he has, he oversees the Bureau of Administration, which, um, controls the recruiting unit and the training unit, which is the academy. I think he has some more specifics on the boot camp.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, everyone, for your support. Sorry, I haven't been speaking for a few hours here. Um, first of all, again, thank you for the support. I feel tremendous su- more, support from the council on recruiting. Our, uh, focus, uh, recently, we signed the thirty-by-thirty pledge. Thank you for your support on that. And, um, I want to tell you a little bit about the numbers that we have right now. Right now, we have twenty-four, uh, recruits in SJ forty-eight. Four of them are women. And SJ forty-nine, we have three out of thirty-two. We have more, but some of them didn't make it. Um, but we have found different jobs for them, some of them in the city, which is great, and some of the other ones are working hard to try and make it back into our SJ fifty academy. I would say, I would estimate about fifty-three people are being backgrounded for SJ fifty academy. That won't be the number, although I would like it to be. Um, but that's where we are right now. And there is, um, I believe there are six females that are being backgrounded in that academy, but I'd have to get you that number when we get a little more solidified on that. As for the women's boot camp, um, we are gonna be kicking that boot camp off in August of this year. And that will involve a kickoff event very similar to the Women's Career Day that we had, and that will lead into a series of paths for women to attend fitness, both on Wednesdays and every other Saturday, as well as, um, we're doing a different, um, style of boot camp where we include the written exercises, the oral board, the, uh, introduction to the backgrounding process and that sort of thing. And, and really a high level of mentorship, which, um, I'm excited about for this program. So just thank you for supporting us, first of all. And, um, ask me something else if I forgot to address something you asked.
Yeah, well, well, thanks for that detail, and I'm, I'm really excited about this boot camp. I think getting that critical mass is really important. As I understand it, we have enough in the budget to have a cohort of fifteen potential women recruits, is that right?
Yeah, I think, I think we have more room, for sure. And my call to action is just going to be, when we put it out, I send it to all of you. Uh, if you can include it in the newsletters, that'd be great, or recommend people from your districts to join the, into the boot camp. It would be, it would be powerful. We also have some of our cadets. Right now, the police cadets, forty-eight percent of our police cadets are female. Uh, one of them's my daughter. And, um, she told me I had to say that, so. That being said, they are a phenomenal group. We're working with West Valley College to come up with a curriculum that allows them to get credits while they're being cadets. And really, like chief said, keep them in the, on the pathway to become officers here, so.
Yeah, I think that's great. And then just, uh, sort of cross-referencing to the recruitment dollars for advertising, marketing- and outreach, are we incorporating into that any, any tactics? Have we given any thought to how we leverage that? Not just for, of course, we want all qualified candidates, um, and as, as Acting Chief said, it's, it's a tough time to recruit folks, so we need to double down on our investments there. But in terms of gender diversity, are we, are we working that into any of that marketing and, and, and advertising? Have we thought about that?
Yes, we went out to RFP, we picked a company, um, I think I can say it's Epic is the name of the company. That is a new recruiting strategy for us to rebrand some of the advertising we're doing. I think we're doing a great job at including every type of person, uh, to, to let them know that they're welcome here, but especially with women. We have a recruiting campaign that will include creating, uh, really a pathway for women to know that they're accepted and that they are appreciated and welcome here for our department.
Great, I appreciate that. Okay, well, keep up the good work, and thanks for the update there. Appreciate it. And then Chief Sapian, um, on the fire side, um, I know on page four ninety-five, we've got a line item there for a hundred thousand dollars for consulting services specializing in fire service recruitment. And the goal, um, as I, uh, I understand it, which I think is great, is to develop a strategic plan for increasing uh, female participation in the fire service. Uh, just curious if you can tell us a little more about timing of when we think that, uh, plan would come forward, and if there are things we're doing, uh, or what else we are doing in the meantime?
Thank you, mayor. Um, so, I'll, I'll start with, with timing. Uh, we will start immediately, uh, to build, uh, a scope for, for that study, and once the fiscal year starts, we'll, we'll start that procurement process as soon as possible to get a, a consultant onboard. Um, uh, quite a few things in progress, uh, on the recruitment front. Um, one, uh, is we also are resuming our annual women's boot camp, uh, one just on the horizon right now. Um, that filled up, uh, quite quickly. Uh, we've expanded the number of participants to seventy-five. Uh, and the idea there is that, um, participants will, will get a sense of the job demands. They'll get an opportunity to network with, with our firefighters here in the department. Uh, we will certainly work to build, uh, connections and mentorship opportunities with each of them. Uh, we are also, uh, e- engaged, uh, as participants in, uh, a program called, uh, FCTC. It is part of the, uh, California Joint Apprenticeship Committee. Um, uh, it's a, it's an offshoot of, of that program. Um, and some very exciting things happening at that level. Uh, we do our application and recruitment process through FCTC. Uh, and they are right now providing paramedic and EMT training across the state with specific, um, uh, focus on, uh, diversification, uh, of, uh, qualified candidates. Uh, internally, uh, we have some challenges that, um, really, um, are, are somewhat structural. Um, part of that is that we have a ratio of, of our entry-level position, which is firefighter, which has to be paramedic. Um, and a smaller number are EMTs. And so, the minimum qualifications to apply and, and be hired are higher than they were way back when I got hired, where it was truly an entry-level position, and, and the, the city and the department provided all of the training necessary to, uh, enter the, enter the department. Uh, and so, part of, I think, the scope we'll, we'll look for in that consultant is to figure out what areas would be most advantageous for our future investment. Uh, we have in the past provided paramedic training internally. Uh, the benefits of that were, uh, unfortunately, short-lived because people moved out of the firefighter rank quite quickly, uh, after they took that training. And so I think we'd have to figure out, uh, are there different ways to deliver our ALS services than we do today that could allow us to hire more closer-to-entry-level employees? Um, all of that is, is kind of under evaluation. Um, we have, I think, made really good progress in terms of, of outreach and recruitment. Uh, as I said earlier, our hiring rate, uh, since I started as a fire chief, has been about seven-point-eight percent female. Uh, and, and that includes only those who have graduated from, from academies, uh, and, and gone into the field. Uh, but those efforts were, were stalled because statewide, we experienced such a drastic shortage of paramedics that we ended up in a position where we could only hire paramedics. Um, and, and so, as we overcome that challenge and, and the market changes again, we'll have new opportunities to provide recruitment of, of EMT, which is a much easier certification level to achieve for applicants.
Thanks, chief. On the paramedic front, have we communicated to the, I assume there are schools for paramedics? Have we told them that we place a real, uh, priority on getting to greater gender parity and ask them what they're doing to try to diversify? If, if it's a pipeline issue, are we going upstream in the pipeline?
Yes, I think the, um, part of, part of the challenge, and COVID had a tremendous impact. One is, uh, a lot of schools just flat-out went out of business, and so there aren't as many paramedic schools as there used to be. Um, I think, uh, certainly, uh, the, the program, uh, that FCTC is putting forward, uh, is very focused, as I said, on, on diversification. And we've been in, in, uh, conversations with them to try to gather some of their best practices. Locally, we've been working with the county medical director, uh, of the Emergency Medical Services Agency to, uh, see if we can stand up more, uh, cohorts, uh, delivering paramedic classes. Um, there's some opportunities that seem to be, um, taking hold at Stanford. Uh, Foothill College has been evaluated for adding, um, uh, courses. Mission College has shown some interest, as has, uh, the South Bay Academy. And so, all of them, uh, are in conversations with us, and we do express the desire to, what we say is, is have a, a workforce that represents the community that we serve.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, I, I do hope you'll really push that priority with them personally and directly, and tell us what you need. I, I think, um, I don't think I'd be stepping out too far to say that this is a priority for the whole council, uh, reflected in the adoption of the March message, of course. And, um, look, I just, I wanna, I look forward to seeing the strategic plan. I want us to be on the path to having, uh, the, the greatest share of women in our department in the country. And so, look forward to better understanding how we're gonna get there. Um, thank you, chief, appreciate that. I want to just, I, I'm, causing a time here, I have one more topic I just want to flag before we move on. Automated speed safety, the enforcement pilot, that I'm thrilled, I know Councilor Foley is as well, as the chair of our Vision Zero Task Force, thrilled that we are one of just six cities in the entire state that will be able, for the first time, to pilot speed safety cameras. Uh, wanted to ask about, I, I see the, uh, the budget line item here. We are estimating ongoing cost of about two-point-seven million a year. Uh, I assume that takes into account cost recovery? I'm just curious, is that, I, I was expecting the cost recovery maybe to be higher, but I, maybe I was wrong. Um, Jim, is that, is that right, two-point-seven million a year, once we get those cameras up?
Mayor, let me just take a look at that, and as the TAS, um, gets back in here later, we can a- address that, that question. I think it's mostly-
Okay, well, okay, so I'll flag it for when we get to transportation. That works. And then, uh, if you'd like, we can punt it to that item as well, but I know our goal this year, I believe, um, San Francisco, I never like when this happens, San Francisco seems to be about nine months ahead of us on this one. We're planning to RFP this year. How can we accelerate the timeline for getting some of these automated cameras up? And should we push that to the transportation? Section? Okay, all right, that works. Um, all right, looks like I've inspired another question. Councilor Dewan?
Thank you, mayor. I, I just got a quick question. Both the police and fire department, have we looked into put more emphasizing on recruiting, um, toward the Vietnamese community, because we have thirteen percent of the population?
Yes, council member, we have. And we recently were, uh, had a recruiting booth set up at a Lunar New Year Festival over at History Park. So that's part of our recruiting efforts, is, you know, any, any large cultural event in the city where we think there's the opportunity to meet people who would be interested in the law enforcement career, we're gonna try to set up a booth. Uh, and we're doing, trying to do a better job of coordinating, getting information about different events like that to our recruiting unit so that we can ensure that we're there. But we a- absolutely have done that, and we'll continue to.
Thank you, Chief Sapian.
Uh, very similar response. Our, our activities on getting out to community events is, has expanded quite dramatically in the last couple of years, uh, with the same effect. We're also making a concerted effort to push all of our social media messaging in multiple languages to really connect with the community, um, uh, in everything that we do. So fire prevention, recruiting efforts, and, and the like.
Thank you, this I have.
Thank you, council member. Okay, that brings us to the end of our public safety budget study session item. Thank you all very much for your work on that report. We're gonna move on now to neighborhood services. And we'll just take a minute for the transition.
Good morning, Mayor Mayhem, City Council. I'm Jill Born, City Librarian and Director of the Library Department. Today, I'm here with my colleagues, John Cisarelli, Director of Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services Department, Matt Lush, Director of Public Works, Rachel Roberts, Deputy Director of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement, and making her Neighborhood Services and Education CSA budget debut, Rachel Vanderveen, uh, with the Housing Department, Assistant Director, and lastly, our fearless Deputy City Manager, Angel Rios. The Neighborhood Services City Service Area sometimes seems like the most challenging to define as we play a critical and valued roles in the lives of so many aspects of our residents' lives. Through a diverse and comprehensive menu of activities and programs, this CSA does a lot. But the summation of our actions result in much more. We make concepts like inclusion real for our residents. We deliver trust and belonging on a daily basis, sharing spaces and resources and knowledge that strengthen our communities. The departments in the CSA offer opportunities to flourish in all neighborhoods, responding to a spectrum of our residents' needs. From food insecurity to internet access, from childcare to summer camp, from layups to cleanups, from permits to parks to puppies, from housing stabilization to the history of lowrider culture, from high school diplomas to hiking trails, from red pandas and even tortured poets. Our collective work is all about building healthy bodies, healthy minds, and healthy communities on which the future of our city depends. And with that, it's not moving forward. There we go. Here are some samples of our key programs by department. Library collections and programs support learning, individual, family, and community empowerment. This is the first year that the Housing Department budget is incorporated in the NSC budget specifically related to our homelessness response division. For PRNS, this list highlights the breadth of diverse services offered in alignment with their mission to connect people of all ages and abilities to our neighborhoods, parks, and community centers. PBCE's Code Enforcement Division programs show a range of services, from community code enforcement to solid waste codes, code enforcement. Public Works includes our animal care services licensing, field operations, and customer services. This slide describes the core services of each department in relation to the overall CSA portfolio. Excuse me. Um, and impact. Uh, you'll see clear alignment across our programs, our core services, and- our Performance Measure Dashboard. The library's focus is on measuring community ratings of overall quality of customer service and staff assistance, which have maintained relatively positive levels in recent years. Animal Care is tracking the percentage of animals leaving the shelter through adoptions, rescues, transfers, or return to owner. While consistent in the past, we are dealing with a decline due to the increase in number of untreatable and unhealthy animals arriving in the shelter. There are a few changes to note this year for the Code Enforcement General Code Program Case Backlog Performance Measure, which has been revised to show a total number of blight cases and total number of non-blite cases within the overall backlog from year to year. From the chart that you see, we can see that there was a reduction of 56 blight cases and an overall reduction of nine cases from fiscal year 2324, reflecting the challenge in resolving more complex cases. The overall target reduction for fiscal year 2425 is 5%. For PRNS, park condition assessment scores are improving while they are still facing resource challenges. The department focuses on condition improvements and uses the PCA scores and the Healthy Places Index to target condition improvement plans in the most impacted neighborhoods. And for Housing, homelessness prevention is a proven solution with consistently successful results, but scaling the program has been limited due to funding constraints. At the department-level budget summary, you'll see that PRNS is showing overall growth in the department total proposed budget, which is mostly driven by the ongoing commitment and expansion of services in Beautify SJ programs and some annualization of previous one-time funded services. The library is showing an overall reduction due to elimination of filled staff positions in two programs and the expiration of one-time funded programs. Code Enforcement shows a minor increase overall, primarily due to increase in personnel costs and overhead. The Public Works budget shows an increase to continue enhancing critical improvements to animal care services. And Housing continues funding for grants management staff and staff for the eviction, diversion, and settlement program. Our service delivery highlights for fiscal year 2425. We will continue providing access to high-quality library collections, educational programs, and services. But we do anticipate modified and reduced adult literacy and digital skills and STEM outreach services due to reductions in those areas. We are excited to take steps to implement the Children and Youth Services Master Plan. We are adding a veterinarian position in animal care and funding for additional contract services to expand medical and spay-neuter services. We will continue to provide access to public parks, trails, and community centers for all ages and abilities. And we will also continue to operationalize the growth in Beautify SJ neighborhood strategies. Moving on, we will propose, we propose to conduct a Code Enforcement Operational Assessment to evaluate code enforcement processes and organizational structure to allow for more rapid and effective resolution of code enforcement issues without reliance on additional staffing. Code Enforcement will also continue compliant response and inspection of code issues. And finally, our CSA departments and partners are working to expand and provide services to interim housing sites throughout the city. The proposed budget includes funding for operations of six interim sites, three hotel sites, and one supportive parking site, creating spaces for more than 770 unhoused individuals. Over the next year, the city plans to expand interim housing and supportive parking over four new sites, creating 500 additional spaces for the unhoused. Additionally, funding for the eviction, diversion, and settlement program will continue into the new year, preventing families from becoming homeless. This slide represents a condensed list of some of the major program changes affecting our CSA. Within the proposed budget, you will find the total of both additions and reductions being presented. Excuse me. In summary, the proposed budget preserves library hours at all locations, yay, with proposed reductions in adult literacy and mobile STEM programs. Funding for the SJ Access Hotspots is also set to expire, which would eliminate that program. PRNS shows overall department growth due to ongoing expansion of Beautify SJ services. The proposed budget does include reductions in other core department services, such as Viva Calle SJ, and Viva Parks, and PRNS scholarships due to the expiration of previous one-time funding. While Code Enforcement made significant progress in reducing vacancies, they continue to face challenges in reducing the overall backlog and keeping up with demand on service. Through the Code Enforcement Operational Assessment, coupled with the new CES software implementation in progress, PBCE hopes to make strides in efficiency and effectiveness. The expansion of medical services at animal care will address the rise in sick and injured animals arriving at the shelter while also providing spay and neuter services. And interim housing and supportive parking will expand, creating additional spaces for the unhoused, while the eviction, diversion, and settlement program will continue. And with that, I thank you for your time, and we are all here to answer any specific questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for the report and all the great work you each do in your departments, and of course, to your teams. Return to my colleagues. Councilmember Torres?
Really? I was, I was first, okay. Sorry. All right, sorry, I gotta, I'm still recovering from a cold, so this, I might, I have a frog in my throat. So, thank you for that, by the way, and thank you for all that you do, Joe and your team. Libraries are super important for our community. So, do we, do we still, do we still fine our folks when, when they bring in an item late?
Several years ago, I wish I could remember the exact year, but the council did vote to eliminate fines for youth materials, so there are no late fees for children and teens, and there are still late fees for adults and seniors.
Okay. Is that, do we see that as a barrier to some of our seniors, especially in our, in our under-resourced neighborhoods?
We do, and I think in the last two fiscal years, Councilmember Foley has taken the lead on a budget document that led to the forgiveness of, I believe, $5,000 in late fees for seniors.
Okay.
And so we were able to implement that. So that did alleviate some of the burden for seniors. It actually led us to create a separate patron type for seniors, so now we can track their fines separately.
Okay, so how many, how much, how much do late fees bring into our, into our budget?
It changes every second, literally, that someone returns a book, or, you know, and a book becomes late. But in general, I believe last year, we estimated that it was about $70,000 total for late fines.
So late fees bringing in $70,000 approximately a year?
Yeah, for adults, yeah.
For adults, okay. All right.
And sorry, this is Jim. I think this year it's 83.
We also have some that are expiring soon through council action.
Wait, what was that, Jim? I'm sorry?
It's between 70 and 80.
Yeah, I was just affirming, not to equip, I was just affirming that Joe was right in the range of revenues that we receive from fines.
Okay. But, Joe, if, if somebody, if the adult or the young person that is not a youth, who is unsheltered or is, you know, struggling to pay the late fee, can it get waived?
We do still have the programs in place where a person can volunteer away their fines. So adults can volunteer time at the library to, and they earn essentially, I am having trouble remembering, but it's like $20 an hour, I believe, you can volunteer away your fines.
Okay, no, perfect. I just, I don't, you know, in a, in a perfect society, we wouldn't want to charge folks some type of late fee, right? And I'm so glad that we no longer send, you know, our late fees to collections, because, you know, we don't want to ruin people's credit or ruin people's lives, I don't know. And so, you know, I, our libraries are for, should be for everybody, right? And so, you know, I hope that one, one day, you know, we have enough, I should say, I hope one day that we no longer have late fees for everyone, right? Having no late fees for our youth is extremely important. Maybe, you know, we need to start maybe exploring seniors in, in under-resourced neighborhoods, you know, maybe picking some zip codes where it is a barrier, where late fees are a barrier, so. But, you know, other than that, thank you. And then, my next question is for, for John. Hey, John, how's it going? So, how many, I don't know how to, not weed whackers, but I know that equipment has been challenging at some of our parks. I know some parks, they get mowed, others don't. When it rains, sometimes that hampers the ability. But for, for the amount of parks that we have, do we have enough, do we have enough mowers? I guess that's what it is, mowers for, for our parks?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. The gang mowers, the big mowers, I think are the ones you're talking about. And there has been equipment issues with that. I'll ask Avi Otom, Deputy Director of Parks, to answer whether or not we have enough for the system. But we have centralized the system in an effort to mitigate when a machine goes down. Previously, a machine would be assigned to a park district, and if that machine went down, that park district would suffer mostly on its own. We've tried to rotate that around to mitigate for that. However, this year, we were very unlucky and had a variety of machines go down. Avi, if you can give a little more detail?
Thank you, Councilmember Torres, for the question. Avi Otom, Deputy Director of Parks. If all of our gang mowers were in service, yes, we have enough equipment. Unfortunately, we've had a bout of problems with the, with our current mowers. Out of nine total that we are resourced to have in our inventory, right now, only four are in service. Several are in the shop for repair, and we're working very closely with our Public Works fleet team to get those repaired. But unfortunately, the manufacturer has left America for operation, so we're sourcing parts, I think oftentimes from Europe, with very, very extraordinarily long leave times. So in a perfect world with everything in service, yes, we have enough. But as John said, we've been hitting these bumps.
Okay, and mowers, mowers would be under capital improvement, right? Or, it wouldn't be?
The purchase, the acquisition of mowers could be funded out of the capital budget with a, with a special allocation, or it could be funded out of the general fund budget, too.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, the, the, my next, my next question would be for Rachel. Hi, Rachel. So is, is one, I saw, I noticed that we only have one person for, for the illegal tobacco shops, for vacant buildings, and there's a lot of them, by the way, in the city center, including downtown. Is that enough? One person enough?
Thank you for the question. Rachel Roberts, Deputy Director of Code Enforcement. I think for the TRL program, up till now, that has been adequate. I know there's been conversation, though, around expanding other, to regulate, you know, vape and smoke shops, so it remains to be seen depending on how that shapes up. But as far as vacant buildings, no, we definitely need more staffing.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to hear, but, all right. Yeah, as, I know that, that myself and Councilmember Pam Foley have been, have been talking about the, you know, the importance of code having the resources they need to deal with our vacant buildings, right? And these are commercial buildings, these are residential buildings, right? They, they are a hazard, and they, you know, and we actually, and folks actually do call us. I mean, we spend a lot of staff time, council assistants and council members spend a lot of staff time dealing with, with vacant properties in the city of San Jose. They are a nicer, right? And so, great, and...
Councilmember, on that issue, we did add, I added a proposal for $200,000 for a Code Enforcement Operational Assessment, and so we can, that would be part of it to figure out how we can, you know, look at the entire system and make sure we're using our existing resources as efficiently, effectively as possible, even looking at our fine structure and what have you. So we'll definitely, you know, the vacant and abandoned buildings issue will be part of that.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, that's pretty much it for me. I'm gonna, I don't have any questions for Matt, so, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank our staff in the, in the box for your report and presentation. Of course, there's a lot to bite into, especially around blight and addressing the impacts of our unhoused community, which I'm glad to see is being done. With that, I'll move into my questions. On page 609 in the paragraph that speaks to the cameras that Beautify San Jose has, there's a sentence that reads, "BSJ will also initiate a pilot program that uses technology to monitor and identify illegal dumping and graffiti activity." Can we just get a little bit of an explanation? Is it related to the existing cameras, or are we looking to procure new technology to implement this program?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Yeah, there's a couple of things going on right now. As you may be aware, there is a pilot where we actually have a car driving around with cameras, and it uses AI to look at changes or differences on streets to try to determine whether or not a person, for example, is living in a vehicle. And then presumably, if that works out well, that data would be fed back to us as a city, and we'd be able to then act on that information. Similarly, one of the issues with cameras and illegal dumping is that we get all this footage, but somebody has to look at that footage to see, did somebody come by? You know, we know there was dumping, so where were they, what time? You know, you got to go through all that stuff. That takes a lot of effort. We've been talking with IT, who's trying to think through a way that we could use AI or some other technique to look at the video and then clip out the pieces where stuff is happening, so it shortens our time of having to review it and look through hours and hours. We can get, kind of get to the point. So those are the kind of things we're trying to do to just make it more efficient and effective for us to identify a violation and then be able to respond to it.
So, great. Very interested in this pilot, given, you know, all of us have these illegal dumping hotspots and just enforcement of the fine has just been impossible because we just don't have enough police officers to be there. So we'll be able, just so that I know, we'll be able to fine individuals if we see them actively dumping with the cameras?
Yes, that's the objective with our friends in code enforcement. We would identify the violation, then we would give that evidence to them, and then they would follow through on the violation.
No, that's, that's great. Any thoughts on how big this pilot will be? Is it only going to be one place, or?
I don't, because it's not, it's not started yet. We don't, we haven't, we don't have that technology in our hands, the reviewing the tape, so that's why we have the position in this budget added. Hopefully, within the next year, we'll be playing around with something, in camera report back to you, probably in our blight reports, you know, what's going on. We are asking for two more cameras as well, so that would bring our total to 10 that we would have deployed around the city, so more places to look.
That's great. I mean, I think it'd be good to get an understanding of the cost because I could picture doing some budget docs in future years for these cameras because a lot of us got these sites throughout the district, so excited about that. On page 609, it references 11 heavily trafficked gateways identified last year across D3, D5, D6, and D7. Is there a list of these gateways that our council can see?
There is. We can provide that for you. I don't have it in front of me, but there is.
Okay. How are we leveraging our relationships with other agencies such as Caltrans, you know, VTA, to ensure maximization of our limited dollars while employing a high level of service?
Yep. So we have contracts with Caltrans, UPRR, that's the railroad, and Valley Water. We're three of our main partners in this space. We're in process of working on with VTA as well. Um, and in those contracts, they tend to be things like maintenance agreements or cooperative agreements, where we do work together, or, uh, allow each other to be on others' property. Um, so I would say that relationship is going well with all of them. Uh, I think the issue really is, the amount of work is more than all of us together working on it, um, that we can, in terms of the resources we're able to give to it. You know, and when you think of a Caltrans, they're thinking of a much bigger area than just San Jose in terms of their resources, because we're in a district, we're not San Jose-specific Caltrans versus Valley Water. And us, we're a bit, we're a lot more focused on the city, right?
Thank you, John. Um, I'm really excited to see on page 610 that we were able to identify funds for the program manager position for the Neighborhood Association Engagement Model. I think that's a, a major win for, um, our residents and, and neighborhood leaders. I just wanted to see if, if I could get some clarification, what pieces of the, the engagement model and subsequent actions, um, recommended in the memo by Mayor and, and the council members, does this position, uh, allow for?
So, this will begin the, I would call the more intentional coordination of neighborhood associations in their relationship with the city and their communications with the city. So, this will include, uh, four, uh, forums throughout the year, um, where we work on specific issues of importance to the neighborhood associations. Um, and that could be anything. It could be the subject we were just talking about, you know, illegal dumping and cameras. Through which they would provide, uh, feedback, recommendations, we would expect them, we would be asking them across three levels. What can we do that doesn't cost more money? What can we do that costs just a little? And, and what's the whole thing that you'd really love to have, so we just sort of have a feel for that, that breadth of need? Um, and they will also be able to begin connecting, uh, neighborhood associations to each other, which is an important aspect, particularly when they're geographically close to each other, but maybe not working together. Understand, though, that this position also is partly funded using opioid settlement funds. And so, part of their time, they're gonna have to work on opioid programming. Um, the county has a pretty, uh, expansive program, uh, with relationship to opioids, but, um, this settlement money's gonna keep coming in for years and years and years, so we wanna start being focused on how we use it and where we use it, um, and what we use it for. Um, so they'll have two hats, uh, for this program manager, just so you understand. So, that's the basic neighborhood model. There's not a lot to it, cause we don't have a lot of money for it.
So, we'll essentially be able to cover the entire functions that were listed in the initial memo and from the memos written by my colleagues?
Yes, yeah, in terms of the blue memo and the feedback, yeah. So, that, there'll be a survey going out, for example, about, um, the position, uh, to all the neighborhood associations, asking the questions that the council wanted, but yes, those, those things are fine. It's just, it's the founding model, it's not the full model.
Great, and then, just to bring, go back to my question, um, from the public safety section, um, which should have been forwarded to you guys. Um, just the, this, the Safe Summer Initiative grant, we're understanding there's gonna be cuts. Obviously, you know, that could lead to negative outcomes in, in our districts. So, I wanted to see how we're gonna plan to redirect impacted participants to other programs, and if those programs are part of the, uh, SSIG program as well.
Sure, and, and I have to say, I really appreciate getting the question an hour and a half in advance. It makes it easy for me to answer.
Oh, yeah, you could research that a little bit, yeah, of course.
Yeah, um, so, so here's our, here's what we're gonna try to do. So, every year for those summer programs, we put out a request to our providers and say, tell us what you can do. And then, and then we divvy up the money and have a, have a fun summer. So, we're gonna try to mitigate this cut through that process this year by focusing a, a little bit more on the, less on the one-to-one and a little bit more on group, and that way you can stretch the dollar a little further. So, and it's summer, group activities are a great thing. You take them to the beach, you take them, you know, take them to Alum Rock and so on. Um, so, that's probably how we're gonna do it, as well as look for opportunities within, again, whoever responds to us. You know, we're gonna ask them, hey, let's be innovative, there's a little less money this year. Now, that 10% equals about $62,000, give or take. So, it's, it's a haircut, um, but I think that we can be strategic with our partners about how we reduce the impact of that.
No, I appreciate that. I, you know, we stop and, you know, get nervous when it comes to, you know, cutting these essential programs, cause these are youth. If we don't, uh, intervene early, at an early age, we will be spending thousands of dollars on, you know, incarceration or other, um, uh, incarceral approaches, so, uh, would, and I know this decision didn't come easy for the department either, but, uh, hoping that we could limit these sort of cuts and invest on prevention, um, more than, uh, a response to criminal activity. Thank you.
Yeah, agreed, well said, thank you. Uh, Councilman Foley?
Thank you, thank you, Jill, for the, uh, the bulk of the presentation, but I wanna acknowledge John, Rachel, and Matt in the box, and, and in the back, Angel and Rachel, and of course, Jim and Lee, thank you. You know, this is an interesting, uh, CSA. It has housing, it has library, parks, PRNS, planning, building, code enforcement, and it has public works. So, there's a lot going on, and, and I see how they all work together, but this is the one CSA that I think gets, um, charged with having the largest cuts to its budget that affect our community. And that's primarily, I'm gonna focus on the par- parks and library at this point. Because we often come to our, come to the budget and say, oh, let's cut back what we do with the parks. Yet, the parks are what our community supports and thrives and, thrives at and loves the most, along with our libraries. We spent, Councilmember Cohen and I and others worked really hard to restore library hours to some level, including Sunday hours a couple of years ago, so I'm glad to see we're not cutting back any hours in this budget proposal. I am, so I, I just wanna acknowledge how important the libraries are to our community and how important our parks are to our community and the activities around the parks. Your Parks team, John, are fabulous. They do a great job taking care of the parks throughout the city, but they're very responsive to my team as well, always willing and anxious and, and capable and willing to work with us, and even come out to a park and walk through it when we have an issue, so I, I just wanna acknowledge that. There are a couple of things, couple of cuts in the parks budget that concerns me, and it's related to, uh, FTEs, the placemaking team, 2.5 FTEs. We had, last year, we had a cut proposed for Viva Caie, uh, and the cut was from three to two, Viva Caie. And we challenged Viva Caie to say, if you can come back for, and fundraise for the third, we can put on a third, which I understand they did. So, I have the question again this year, is that an option? Is that something that we can propose? Is that something that makes sense for us to look into? Additionally, I want, uh, so I, I have a question about, that's Viva Caie, but then Viva Parks. It, we're, we're going from 75 to 50, and I'm concerned about the impact our, of our community. So, it'd be helpful to know how many residents participated in Viva Ca- Viva Parks in the current fiscal year, in 23, 24, and how that's going to affect our ability to offer Viva Parks down the line. I, I just can't emphasize enough how important it is to have our community have safe spaces, and that's our parks, where they can get out and enjoy the fresh air and interact with the community, and Viva Parks is an, uh, uh, Viva, uh, Parks is an opportunity for that, as is Viva Caie. So, can you talk to me a little bit about, that's a lot, but a little bit about how we might be able to continue on with Viva Parks at a robust level and keep those 2.5 FTEs? Either retain them, or how do, how can you do the work without them?
Sure, thank you for the question. Um, so, uh, Viva Caie and Viva Parks are, to, to us in PRNS, they're really at the core of what we're trying to accomplish, which is creating community and belonging, right? Public life, right? That is sort of the pinnacle of everything we're trying to get to, is creating great public life for this city. So, yes, we don't like, we don't like to see these programs get cut, so I will, I will correct the record quickly, though. The cut that we did to placemaking actually was in this fiscal year. If you recall, it was in August that we did that, after some union negotiations, the budget had to be reconfigured, and we came back and did a series of cuts, and that's, so this is the second cut in this, in, in, for this program, being proposed in this year. So, uh, obviously, it wouldn't take effect till next year. In that cut, we did, we did fundraise for the third Viva Caie. In this cut, going from the 75 to the 50, uh, we wouldn't be able to even do a third one. We just wouldn't have the personnel. Um, you get to a point where you're reducing the personnel enough, you just can't coordinate enough. Um, and so, uh, the only way to fix that would be to add that back, you know, the, um, you know, each, for example, last year, each council member, even though we got cut to 75 Viva Park events, a variety of you had asked for, special budget asked, and so there was an extra six here and an extra four there, and, and suddenly there was another 25 that we were able to cobble together, and so we actually did 100 events, well, we will do 100 events. Just remember, the way this budget's, and this is like summer camps, is the budget for this year is actually paying for this summer, and the budget that we're voting on now will pay for 2025's summer, um, just so you get a sense. We have to do it that way. There's, we can't wait for July 1st to have the money to do the programming. Um, so, uh, absent, absent some new source of funding, we are planning to fundraise for the second Viva Caie. So, we're only funded for the one, so we get two, so we'll fundraise for the second, um, but it's too much of a stretch to get to the third, unfortunately.
Okay, that answers my question, but wasn't the answer I wanted to hear, but I get it. I, I, and I, I certainly acknowledge the buzz, budget shortfall that we're in, and, and I know that really tough decisions have to be made. And it's, it's tough for me to sit here and cut Viva Parks and, and what we do at our parks. It's, it's really hard, so I have to think about a BD and, or something else, how we might be able to approach it and still have the savings that we're talking about, uh, that is necessary. I mean, it, I, I look at how many people benefit from the parks, so it would be, or the, so it would be helpful, John, to, to know how many people attended our Viva Parks. That statistic would be helpful for me.
It was 14,000 for Viva Parks this year, across 75 of them. Um, and then, as you know, the Viva Caie events regularly draw 100,000. In fact, we think this one we just did in April was probably the biggest one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I haven't gotten the full numbers on that one yet. I would be remiss, though, if I didn't also mention, at 50 Viva Parks, understand, this is a program that we apply an equity lens to, the Viva Parks program. So, we're looking for underserved areas first, right? That's the top of our list. So, down to 50, it's not gonna be five per council district. There's gonna be a, a concentration in districts three, five, and seven. That's just the reality of how that works, and so there'll be much fewer in districts like eight, nine, 10, one, four. Um, so, uh, I don't know how many that's gonna be, but it might only be one, um, because we need to focus on the underserved areas first, uh, with this program. That's what it's designed to do.
Yeah, I, I acknowledge that. I think that's really important, that we focus on the underserved areas. And, and when I look at my council budget, uh, and what I can do in my district, because we will not benefit by, from a large amount of Viva Parks. But I have rollover funds in my budget, from being really fairly conservative in my budget in previous years, that I'm considering sponsoring neighborhood events at my parks with the neighborhood associations. But there's only so much I can do for that, too, and that, to, uh, the organizational level, for us to put something like that together, it's, it's a heavy lift, uh, but i- it's important to get our community out and engaged and together, because it just builds, it, it builds such great community, and, and then the community watches out for each other and takes care of each other. It's just a wonderful thing that we can do, and you absolutely need to focus on, on other districts. But I need to focus on mine, and I have to figure out how I'm gonna do that, so, and as other council members who have that capability. Oh, shoot, I'm almost done, and I've only talked about parks. Darn it! Um, okay, well, if I don't get to the other ish, can I ask one quick question about the fitness centers? Just quick. I see we're, uh, closing our fitness centers, 5.3 FTE. What's the actual impact on our community?
Uh, we have currently around 800 memberships, um, so those would definitely be impacted. Uh, I'd say about a third of those are seniors and youth, um, so they'll be impacted. The seniors, you know, we try to get the seniors into the community centers, um, and, you know, we like to see them go in and use the fitness room as well, although we do other activities with them, you know, zumba and dance and, and things that are age-appropriate for, for their ability level. Um, so we'll continue to focus on that, but we won't, we just won't have access to those fitness centers at all.
So, we'll still, just to clarify then, we won't have the fitness centers, so they won't be able to go work out in the gym?
That's correct.
But they will be able to, uh, play basketball indoors, or, uh, or, um, so the pools will be open, too?
Everything else is as it is.
Okay, great, I, I, uh, thank you for that, I appreciate that, and thank you for all the work you do. It's so important to our city and the well-being of our community. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Cohen?
Thank you. Um, I may have a couple of questions in here, but most of what I, I just wanna say is take the opportunity to, uh, thank, you, you know, my favorite CSA. So, I, I, um, I love the libraries and parks, and it's really important. I know the rest of them, we'll say that, we'll, we'll tell you later how much we love you all, too. You know, I, we've always had, we've had these conversations every year, and we have belt tightening about how parks and libraries take the first, always are the first to be hit, and I'm, I'm glad this year that we're being strategic about some things that we might have to sacrifice, but that we are doing this without a proposal to shorten, to reduce our libraries' hours, keeping the library accessible the same hours it is now, continuing to focus on our park maintenance, which we have seen, based on the statistics, a significant improvement in our park condition ratings over the last couple of years, and I'm really grateful for the great work that your team is doing on, on that issue. That's really important. Um, we still, our community centers will still be open, our programming will still occur, our preschools will still be there, our digital equity, uh, efforts will still continue. So, while, while, you know, it might be an unpopular thing to say that there are some programs that will have to, in the short term, hopefully, um, be reduced, that people love, um, that our core services of providing access to all of those facilities and programs will still be there for our residents, and that, to me, is our top, my top priority. You know, because, because these, these programs score high on our, on ratings, and we have 90% in libraries and pretty high ratings in other programs, we don't hear this from our residents as a thing they're concerned about. I know we would hear it from our residents if it wasn't accessible to them, so I, I just, I wanted to be clear. We always talk about what are the basics, what are the things we should focus on? There's no doubt to me that these are the basics, and these are the things that we have to continue to focus on, so I'm gonna thank you for that. Beyond that, the only question I have is about animal services, um, because we've talked a lot about parks and libraries already. Um, you know, obviously, we hear a lot from our residents about concerns about the animal services program. I'm really glad that we are, we're not cutting, obviously, we're staffing it up, we're doing more for our animal services. Just two questions, um, do we, what is our staffing currently for animal control and our ability to get out in the community and respond when people have concerns about strays in their neighborhood?
Thank you. Uh, so, I think at this point, we've hired our la- we filled our last vacancies for our animal services officers, and so I think a couple are now in training. We filled four about six or eight months ago, and they're all trained up, and with our last two were just filled, so we, I, I believe we have a full, uh, fleet of, uh, animal service officers, and, um, I think we're even getting a new vehicle for them one of these days, so.
Okay, oh, great. Um, and then, you, there's, there's, there was a cut for a while in our trap neuter release program.
Yes.
Um, what is our current program? Is there, is there a, a need for more? Are we, are we, is there a funding shortfall in order to be effective in, in dealing with the large stray cat population, for example?
So, as of right now, they re-initiated the, uh, Trap Neuter and Release Program, and there's two different strategies that they have. Some are bringing people for owned cats, and then there is those that are, that are their own communities, and so it's, they, they staggered it over several days. They have, uh, 20 appointments on several days a week that they have to, that they can schedule. Well, the goal of getting, I think, let me make sure what the numbers are before I must speak. I think it was 1,000 animals over this kitten season available, 1,000 appointments, and then there's 600 for owned cats. And so, there's a, a variety of things that, one of the things you see is a, a new, an additional veterinarian. Um, that person actually started a couple of weeks ago, and so one of the reasons why we brought that person on is that additional, uh, capacity. And so, one of the reasons why we brought that person on is that additional capacity. And so, there are additional capacities right now for trap-neuter and release.
So, the way the program works right now is people bring, people trap themselves, bring them to the facility, and make an appointment ahead of time?
Right, there are organizations that do it, then there's individuals that do it that aren't associated with it. And so, it's a coordinated effort, yeah.
And we don't have the program in place to necessarily go into areas with high number of stray cats and, and set out traps and do some of the trapping as a city?
We aren't doing it actively as staff going out there or animal service officers. We're relying on community partners to do that part.
And then, as far as providing traps for people, is there, is that, is there a program that exists for that?
I'm sorry?
So, people, let's say somebody has in the neighborhood an issue with a large number of stray cats, and they want to at least make sure that they're all spayed and neutered?
We do have traps avail, I guess, we have traps available for that as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you, those are my questions. Thank you all for, for the work you're doing.
Great, thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Batra?
Thank you very much. Let me, first question I have is about the animal care. Jim, you may be in the best position to answer that one. Recently, I saw a two-hundred-thousand-dollar donation for animal care. Does that go over and above the budget which we already had? Or by getting that donation, have we subtracted it out of our planned budget?
Well, I'm not aware of the details of that, so that donation would have been received in our gift trust fund, which is sort of held separately to be spent on the things that the gift was meant to be spent on. So, that will be in addition to what's in the proposed budget.
Okay. John, about the Viva Parks, do you have attendance information for each one of the parks? Not here, but I mean, you do have in the records, so that we can figure it out, where they were popular, where they were not?
Yes, we do, we can provide that list.
Okay, so we'd like to work with you in figuring out what we need to request additional. One area of concern I have is, the city consists of areas which are maintained by DOT, some maintained by PRNS, some maintained by county, some maintained by the Caltrans, Valivar. Is there anybody in the city who can have a coordination responsibility? That all these areas get cleaned properly and periodically? Because at the moment, residents don't see it that these sections belong to different parts, but they do see the quality of cleanliness around the city. Mayor's done a great job of getting a lot of volunteers out and getting things cleaned up. But, you know, like right now, Almeda Expressway, the weeds are up to four feet, okay? Residents don't know that this belongs to county. They come to the council member, and council member is not well-trained to run the weed whacking, okay? So, is there anybody in the city who can have the coordination responsibility to make sure the whole city is properly clean?
Thank you for the question, council member. I, I think there are people that help in their specific area, for example, DOT folks, right? They're, they're going to have to coordinate with Caltrans because, and the county, because their roads are going through our city, their easements are in our city. But I don't think we have a concerted effort or a one-stop place where there's one person coordinating with them. You know, when we get those complaints, we often say, well, that's the county, we should, we can let the county know for you. But I think if you're not seeing the results with other agencies, that's where you can exercise your political muscle and say, pick up a phone and call somebody and say, hey, to a counterpart, I could use your help here, you know? I'm getting, I'm getting slammed over here for this stuff, and it's your, it's your job to take it down. So, we're happy to, to try to coordinate at the staff level, but sometimes it needs a little bit of a political push to get what you want. We've done this with Caltrans quite a bit over the last year or two on some of their sites, and the mayor or some of you will call people at Caltrans and say, hey, I really need help here. We're working on an issue in D seven, trying to figure out a ETA issue, same thing. So, I'm sorry to say, we don't have a perfect way to deal with that, because everybody's sort of got their own obligations and, and their own elected officials that they're obligated to. So, we just try to work the system as best as we can.
I'm, I'm going to ask, Lee, could you please take that as a request for you to evaluate if such a coordination activity needs to be part of the city work?
Sure, we're happy to look at that more broadly. I would say, I do think Public Works, the Beautify SJ team, and really under Angel's portfolio, we've started to do that more and more. I think we do run into areas, like this year, the County Expressway still has high weeds because of the rain. So, they chose not to mow it because they wouldn't have the funds to go out twice. So, we end up in these kind of weird situations with other institutions that have different, you know, standard operating procedures. Well, we're, you know, we've been asked by you guys to kind of push the boundary on some of this work, and some of those other groups, whether it be the county or Caltrans, have different focus. So, I, I do think we can continue to do the coordination on our side, but to John's point, it is about applying pressure to some of those other boards and institutions as well.
Yeah, and, and I understand that, you know, you have no control on how they conduct themselves. What I'm saying is, from a city standpoint, if we have a single point of focus, who is looking towards this level of activity, they're not going to perform it, but if they would look at it to make sure that the whole city is clean and, and impressive-looking. Okay, the last, last question I'm going to have is, Rachel, you knew I wouldn't leave the homelessness around. I'm really pleased that we have been able to get things done for the homeless, and especially the new interim site we just approved. We approved that one against not having protests from the neighborhood. We actually got that one approved with the neighborhood really appreciating that we are doing that interim housing. Well, one of the common comments I get from the people is that when you are doing this homelessness efforts, you talk about it, and you do a lot of things for the homeless, but you do not seem to give enough weight to what's happening to the neighborhood. We're trying to make the neighborhoods better, but we need to make sure that any of our plans, which we talk about homelessness, whatever we're doing, we need to always make sure that the neighborhood gets to be informed about how it is actually improving the neighborhood, and we should make effort to improve them. Because we've got about five thousand homeless people, and we've got nine-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand housed people. And whenever we're doing things, we seem to be angering the nine-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand and, and not really making the good effort. So, I'm not giving you any specific recommendation, I'm not asking you any specific requests for you to do. Just keep in mind that we have nine-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand housed people. Whatever actions we are taking, we need to keep in mind what impact it has on them and how to communicate to them that they see all this effort in a positive light and give us their cooperation to make things better for us. Okay? Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, council member. Councilmember Higuain?
Yeah, thank you for all the information, I appreciate it. I had two, two questions, some comments. One is about Viva Caya, and the other one's about the, the unhoused. Viva Caya, what, what I'm curious about, well, a few things that I've, that I think you should know is I suspect you're going to see efforts up here to try to figure out how we can preserve that third Viva Caya. I think it's important to the city, it's something that the residents are fans of, and so, and I think we are as well. So, I think you're going to see efforts around that, and I appreciate the fundraising. I think there's a golf tournament tomorrow, and I don't know if that goes towards some of that, but I would encourage everyone that has, anyone that hasn't signed up to sign up and help, you know, participate and help fundraise for some of these efforts. I'll be doing it, so I think it'd be great. The question I have is, do you, do you think that Viva Caya is lean enough? And what I mean by that is, you know, I was part of the group of folks that went out to Mexico, in Guadalajara, to actually see the Via Recreativa, and, and two things that I noticed. One is, they have very little police presence at the intersections, as an example. And I believe, I was there recently, but I think they have a fixed route, so, route. And so, it's just, I think it's the same route every time, I believe. And so, what I'm curious about is, do you think we've worked in all the efficiencies possible to try to make it as lean as possible? And again, related to, we don't, I personally don't think we need that many police officers. And secondly, I wonder if having a fixed route, maybe east to west, if that would create efficiencies and predictabilities in, in just the planning that would allow us to have the money necessary to put on more of these?
Thank you, council member. It's interesting on the fixed route idea. I think what we're trying to get to is a bit of a rotation. The fixed route, though, I often hear from, from some of you, I support this, but when is it going to come to my district? Right, and so, we're always trying to figure out how we can do that, because it's not simple. Like, the next one, we're going to get down the east side. We don't get over there very often, it's not simple. But anyways, to your question about the leanness of the program, it is lean. We do, you know, we do struggle with the amount of staff we have to pay for in terms of police support. We have our friends in DOT, so we're paying them usually on overtime to help us out, because it's a whole lot of street closures. And that, that prompts a response from the police department about safety. And so, we continue to try to have those, those conversations, even around events, in fact, just events in, in one place. How much police presence does there need to be versus what could, what could we do? So, we, we will continue to have those conversations, because it brings down cost. But, you know, the police department isn't doing it just because either, you know, they have genuine concerns.
Right, right, and I understand that, you know, I, I think, you know, we, we as a city create these rules that then we, the box, if you will, that we then try to operate within. And so, I think we just need to be thoughtful about changing some of the rules or changing the way we approach some of this stuff. Regarding the fixed route, what I would say is, I was in the past, one of those council members said, when is it coming to South San Jose? And it just came to South San Jose recently. But I would venture to guess if you said, look, if we're going to have three or maybe even four of these, having a fixed route for a number of years is going to be the way to go, and we're going to have these instead of not having one or two extra, I suspect you may get buy-in from folks in understanding that, you know, we're going to have a fixed route from, let's just say, east to west, and that's the way it's going to be for a few years, just to preserve the program and make sure we have something. And so, I, I just think some of those conversations need to be had, and I know you all work hard to try to make it possible. But I just think, I don't, I suspect, given what I've seen, that I don't think we've worked through some of those efficiencies as well as maybe we should, and, and it's probably our own departments that are creating some of the roadblocks. And I know sometimes there's not, there isn't enough coordination and talking amongst departments, but I think a little bit more can be done there to help make sure this is possible.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. And, and just so you know, you know, when, when Ed Solis went down to, I believe it was Guatemala, you know, one of the things he brought back was, when, their open street programs are much more organic than ours are. And it is, it's like every Sunday or something like that.
Correct.
It's, it's almost combined with like a farmer's market situation. And so, it's this big program that doesn't require as much sort of hands-on management and all that. That is our goal, is to have it be more organic. It's just getting there, you know? Again, we have a lot of rules, and we have a lot of
Yeah.
things going on in the city, so it's, it's a different process.
So, in Mexico, I mean, it happened, I mean, I just was in it not too long ago. They have it every single Sunday, and people know, it, it becomes, it just becomes ingrained in the, in the city life, right? That you know, every Sunday, this particular route is going to be available, and cars know that they don't go there. And I think that, that predictability, it creates more ease of operation, if you will, in closing some of the streets, because people know, well, don't go there on Sunday, and they already natural. But I think that there is good in changing the routes, but I think there's also value in having a fixed route where people know that you don't go in this area. Anyway, so you get my point, but I, I think there's some space there to work through some of that. The other question I have is, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate CSA to ask, but I'm going to ask. It's more just for information, maybe, at, at another time, but it's related, related to the unhoused. What I, what I'm curious about is if someone, and if someone has any numbers or any information as it relates to my question, I'd appreciate to hear it, but if not, we can get it offline. And I think this is relevant, related to some of what we need to do along our creeks with the stormwater permit and the unhoused and things of that nature. And so, what I'm curious about is, during the pandemic, we had the South Hall open, obviously housing tons of people there. What I'm curious about is, how many folks were we housing there at the South Hall? If we have an answer, great, if not, we can get it offline. I'd like to know that, and I also, I think it's also important to know the cost associated with that.
Three hundred.
Three hundred people. So, we were able to?
Thank you to the housing team up top, but yes, it was three hundred.
Okay, so during the pandemic, we were able to house three hundred people in the South Hall. And then, and then, Jim, if you, if you can rebat, reach back to the far reaches of your, of your brain, can you, do you recall what the cost was? And I know we were providing meals and a host of other things, but, and if we don't have that, that's fine. But I think that's going to, that's going to be important to me, and I'm going to continue to ask the question just as we go down the process of trying to figure out how we're addressing some of these budget implications.
I think Reagan's going to give that a shot.
Hey, Reagan.
Good morning, Reagan Hannity, we're with the Housing Department. The South Hall shelter during COVID was about two-point-nine million a year to operate.
Two-point-nine million a year? And did that, that in, where we, remind me, I know we had portable bathrooms, I'm not sure showers out there, but were, did that include providing meals?
Yes, it included daily meals, security, the rental of showers and restrooms. That South Hall tent was not meant, you know, for shelters, so we were bringing in a lot of additional equipment.
Okay, all right. And, and maybe this is the wrong CSA for this part of the question, is, do we know how frequently it's being used for events? I don't, I know we sometimes have the science fair in there and other things. No, I know, I know, I should have asked this to Nancy yesterday when she was here, but.
We can absolutely follow up on that for the council. I do know that it's, it's being used, it's not that it hasn't, but we don't know the, I don't know the frequency off the top of my head.
All right, I know the Van Gogh sort of show was there as well. Okay, all right, thank you. I, I would just lift up to my colleagues that as we continue to have discussions about the budget, that we think about creative ways to help address some of these issues that we're grappling with that have an impact and sort of bite into, and create sort of competing priorities as relates to, say, housing, Measure E, for example, and providing the space and, and where we can actually house some of these folks. And it may be much more cost-effective way. Now, those involve trade-offs, obviously, because we would take this offline for rental purposes and such, but I think it's a worthwhile sort of thing to consider as we go through the budget process. Thank you.
Thanks, council member, good questions. Vice Mayor Kamau?
Thank you. I also want to extend my appreciation to everyone in this CSA. What you do is so critical to our qual, quality of life. I'm really delighted that we're not going to close libraries. I'm a little sad about the Viva, Caya via Viva Parks, but you know, maybe there are ways that we could do some fundraising to be able to augment. And, you know, certainly yesterday, I, I want to preserve code enforcement and the work that you do there. And of course, Public Works is the one that keeps us all going and makes sure that everything works correctly. And of course, housing is critically important as well. I think many of my colleagues have already asked my parks and, and library questions. And so, I, I think that I'm going to go to just getting a little bit of clarity on some of the issues on the housing side, since this is part of the Neighborhood Services CSA. And in, in the beginning of the budget book on page twenty-two, it kind of gives this broad description of how much is approximately being spent on homeless spending in this proposed operating budget of a hundred-and-twenty million. And, and that's understandable, because that's kind of the big, broad brush. When we go to the CSA on page two-sixty-five, I had a question regarding one of the bullets on expected service delivery. Housing will implement the very, let's see, next to the last bullet, housing will be implemented, implement the re-managing homeless outreach program. Is that the nine million that the council already approved? That was kind of a fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that's nine million. And, and then it says that on the key budget actions that reallocates Measure E revenues, twenty-four-point-six million. But then, in your detailed information on page five-oh-eight, it says that your key budget action from the Housing Department allocates fifty million of Measure E funding. So, I'm just wondering the discrepancy in those two numbers.
So, yeah, that's a good question. So, the fifty million is the entire amount of Measure E funding that is available? So, that's the, the total amount of funding, so that will be al- E funding that is available. So that's the total amount of funding. So that will be allocated to all the various uses. What's being referred to in the CSA section is 20, of the 35.6 million that was per existing policy slated for affordable housing uses, 24.6 of that will be reallocated for homeless support purposes.
Okay, so the 50 is the total. Okay, got it.
Correct.
I was a little bit confused there with the different numbers there. But looking at, you know, I do understand how it is a priority, especially with the stormwater permit. I think that for this year, hopefully, those grants will come in. But I just want to express my concern for next year, right? And it'd be great to kind of figure out what are some of the things that can be implemented so that that number doesn't shrink to 6 million? Because should we not get the grants and we have to go into it? I think that it causes a lot of future issues. So I think that as we, you know, have a little bit of time, we ought to think more broadly as to, okay, well, you know, I know it's sort of the worst-case scenario, if, you know, in terms of contingency. But I also think we need, like I said yesterday, a little bit of a Plan C, because I don't want to put our eggs in the grant basket or the money that's coming in that's not yet secure. And so I just think that, well, you know, should that not happen, or happen more than a year from, you know, I mean, that we ought to think about what is going to be able to supplement or help or whatever.
So thank you, Vice Mayor Kameh. We're absolutely thinking about a Plan C as well.
Okay, good.
So just, but we do, from just a prudent fiduciary adoption of a budget, we need to have a contingency plan. But we're definitely thinking about all scenarios of how we can make sure that we make that goal of ours.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Vice Mayor. I want to jump into a few questions on the homelessness front. As Councilmember fully mentioned, the CSA covers a lot of ground. I appreciate all my colleagues' comments and questions. Wanted to kick off on stormwater permit and just make sure we're on the same page about a few things. Number one, I think, is just kind of getting a better understanding of, you know, based on the $27 million that's been allocated to address the stormwater permit, how we plan to work across all teams to deliver the result that, as I understand it, you know, is essentially, to sum it up, either relocating or moving back and better managing encampments involving probably over 1,000 residents along our waterways, isn't going to happen overnight. But just want to hear a little more about how we're planning to do that cross-functionally.
Thank you. Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager. City Manager's Office, as well as most of the departments in the box, as well as housing, currently working on what we would call a change in management approach on how we can be more focused and streamlined and efficient around this, especially within the next 12 to 24 months with these requirements, given the risk we face. So that'll be something, as we continue to work through the budget with you guys, that Jennifer, myself, Omar, Angel, and Kip are working with in the City Manager's Office to really put the right people on the team and have new management structures in place where they can move more quickly and be more nimble, given the resources that'll be allocated here.
That's good to hear. I mean, this is a monumental undertaking, something we've never had to do at this scale before, and is obviously going to be a cross-functional endeavor. So I think it's really important that we are creating a clear execution path for those folks to take on this really significant challenge facing our city. If we, based on the summary in the budget document, if we expect the 10 million for safe sleeping alternatives to help us relocate about 500 people, how do we think about addressing the gap, which is at least another 500 people in those priority areas that we must clear or at least get to zero discharge?
Thinking of the question, Mayor, I think that is going to be, is really going to be a multi-year process. So we're probably not done here with what the stormwater permit implementation looks like. And so, you know, this $10 million is looking, going to be looking at a couple of options, either sort of supported safe sleeping sites and/or some alternative sites where there are more, even more minimally supported places for people to be outside of the waterways. So I think we're going to learn a lot in the next six months about what's going to be feasible and what sort of be possible. But I think there's over 2,000 people in the waterways. So I expect us to be having, you know, more conversations in the budget process probably next year, armed with more information. But we're probably not done here with the amount of funding that's going to be needed.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. Just on that point, as I understand it, at least our current message from the Water Board is that the credits that we've been able to use for quite a few years now will no longer be recognized as of the middle of next calendar year, basically the end of this coming fiscal year. Do, that would imply that we need to be at a zero, or 100, I'm sorry, a 100% reduction in direct discharge? Is that, have we gotten greater clarity from them about how they're interpreting that?
Yeah, let's have Deputy Director Harkness come down and answer that question.
Yeah, I see Kip coming down. I know it's a dynamic situation, and we're still, and I assume, Kip, you can incorporate into your answer where we are on our direct discharge resufficiency.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager. As you mentioned, the credits that we get for doing the routine creek cleanups do expire at the end of June, next June, not this coming June. And our understanding from the Water Board is that the requirements at that point are that we essentially have structural programs in place that deal with all of the issues. That is to say, we no longer get credit for cleaning things up after they're in the creeks. We have to make sure that nothing gets into the creeks. This includes a substantial investment, which you'll hear about in the next, or a couple of CSAs from now, in terms of large trash capture devices, a couple of hundred small trash capture devices, and a number of other structural programs to make sure that less pollutants go into the creeks themselves. But it is absolutely essential in order to get that 100% goal, that all of the trash from encampments would either be outside of the waterways or managed so that they don't go into the waterways in the first place. And so that's a, that requirement would come into effect at the end of next fiscal year.
Great, thank you. And then, Kip, I have just a couple more questions that you may be best positioned to answer, or maybe others. But can you share a little more about how we're engaging partners at the county and Valley Water to enlist their support in this effort?
We're working with Valley Water to create a comprehensive approach together on this. And we're actually going to draft a letter of intent that we would hope to finalize shortly, that would include coordination across the board on all of the waterways for which we are jointly responsible. Valley Water has asked for our support in some of the areas where they don't have the ability, our police powers, for example, and also our ability to provide the actual housing. And then we both will need, both the city and Valley Water, will need to work in tight coordination with the county on the range of services for which they are responsible and on the lead, especially the behavioral health services, the benefits, and all of the safety net services that the county provides, which neither the city nor the Valley Water District is able to provide.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I'm glad we're actively engaging in those conversations. We're certainly going to need deep partnership from both county and Valley Water to meet this requirement. And then, just in terms of hiring, we obviously have some budget here for adding staff capacity, both to meet our obligations under the Clean Water Act, as well as broader expansion of Beautify SJ services that will largely, I think, be targeted there, but maybe beyond. How do we minimize the lag in staffing those positions and hitting the ground running as quickly as possible?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Mayor. So the, so we've already started that, even though the budget isn't approved. We've already worked with the Budget Office and HR, identifying some critical planning positions. Kip didn't get a chance to mention, but, you know, we're entering into a planning phase as this is happening. So there's a period of time where we're all going to be huddling a lot to try to figure out what we're doing. And that's the period of time which we would be hiring. So we would be hiring heavily in those first three months of the year. So I would expect we're on the ground in fall doing the real work.
Okay, great. I appreciate that you all are being proactive and planning ahead. We've just got to keep shortening our timelines on execution. So that's great. Thank you. Wanted to just quickly touch on no return, no encampment zones, pages 608, 609 of our budget binders. You know, with 11 no-return, no-encampment zones identified around current and planned EIH and safe parking sites, I just want to be clear that the two FTEs we have for this work are not solely devoted to the no-encampment zone along Guadalupe. It is still worded that way in the proposed budget. I just want to be really clear that those are flexible resources that can be used in any of those no-encampment zones. Is that accurate?
That's correct, as long as we're able to keep up with the no-encampment zone work, right? So the more no-encampment zones we work, the further we spread them out, right? The less they can do other stuff. But certainly in the initial phases, we do believe they'll be available to help with other things.
Good. Just want to make sure they were not geographically constrained and can be deployed for the no-encampment zones, because there's more than just the Guadalupe one. Just wanted to make sure that was clear and on the record. And then, more broadly, the March budget message directed the City Manager to preserve our progress and expand this model of no-encampment zones to areas where the impacts of encampments are, and I'm just quoting from the message, "Most costly, create unsafe conditions for all residents, waterways, commercial districts, and the environment." That's on page 12 of the March budget message. I guess I want to better understand how we have met that direction in the proposed budget. And I want to get into, there's preserving our progress, and then there's a code of conduct. There's this concept that, one, when we spend millions of dollars offering people shelter, housing, services, decommission encampment, clean it, we don't just allow immediate re-encampment and do it all over again six months later. That's the idea of preserving our progress. Can't do it everywhere. But being strategic about where waterways, number one, it sounds like, but other public access, near trails, parks, other highly visible or vision zero areas, there are a lot of factors there. Then the other is code of conduct for all those areas where we're not preserving our progress by preventing re-encampment. Those are two key strategies that were really emphasized in the March message and adopted unanimously here. And I kind of, I want to understand, it's not clear to me from the investments I see in the budget, how we're meeting that direction here. I see some pieces that could be used for that. But I want to make sure we're all aligned in our expectations and make sure we're making a significant enough investment here to begin to actually do those things.
Yeah, thanks for the question. The, so this will all be sorted out as we're working through the shared public spaces framework. That's where we're trying to identify, what is costly mean? I mean, costly to who? And what are those costs? How do you quantify them, right? Or qualify them, depending on what the issue is. And that is being shepherded, as I think you know, by Deputy City Manager Omar Passan. I don't know if he wants to comment on any of it. But that's where we would do that policy work, to figure out that. I think the amount of resources we're adding to Beautify this year, whatever we're deciding, and I believe we're coming in the fall to talk to you about that framework and get some direction and input, whatever comes out of that, if it had a budget implication, we might push that to a budget process. But we also, again, are getting a lot of resources. So there's probably some low-hanging fruit there. And just some, in some cases, it's more like, well, what are we going to agree to is a good neighbor policy? And then it's a matter of training the staff that are already out there. Or are we saying, we really want this enforced all the time? And somebody actively focused on that, well, that would take, we'd have to add some folks to actively focus on that daily, going by encampments and saying, hey, come on, John, you know, you got to pull this stuff together. So that's sort of the progress of it?
Yeah. And look, I get it's an iterative process, and Rome wasn't built in a day. But I am concerned that we're making budget decisions now that are more or less locked in, where there's some flexibility. But we're making the big decisions now for the next 12, 12 months, without having really defined what kind of good neighbor policy or code of conduct we're going to enforce, how we're going to enforce it, and when and where we're going to preserve our progress and enforce that. And those are pretty critical strategies that I don't want to wait a year for us to do more of. I'm glad to hear we're baking some capacity in to begin to do those things. But to the extent that we can front-load those conversations on the administration side within our departments and start to understand, I think the message was very clear, you know, 12 by 12 sized thresholds for fire and crime enforcement because of fire risk or crime levels that we believe are associated with an encampment, trash and biowaste generation, what, you know, what are our triggers for, you know, an escalated cleanup or an abatement as a method of accountability? And do we have the resources to do it at the greater scale that we need? Obviously, it won't be the full, I understand it won't fully meet our needs. We are running very close to the noon hour. I see more hands going up. We also are going to need to take public comment. What I think I'll do, if it works for the council, is take public comment and adjourn at noon as agendized, and we can finish questions because of how much is in this CSA at the very top of tomorrow. Because I still have two more hands up, and I'm not done with my questions.
We're not meeting until next Wednesday?
Oh, I'm sorry, next week.
The 15th at 9:00 AM.
We're not back tomorrow? Okay. What day is it, anyway? It's already Thursday. All right. They all blur together. So if that's okay with everyone, we're going to stop there. We'll finish up any final questions from the council on this CSA when we reconvene next week. And we do have at least two or three comment cards from the public. Okay, thanks, everybody. Tony?
Jean Dresden and Rosa Saverkul.
Happy lunchtime. My name is Jean Dresden, and I'm here to confirm with you that parks are the lifeblood of the city. And they're the frontline defense against mental health and physical problems. Peer-reviewed research shows that for us. And so it's critically important that we maintain them. I'd like to highlight, though, that even though our operations budget is not cut, they still have to ration their resources because there's not enough resources. This has been a long-term problem in operations. And it's part of what's led to the $500 million infrastructure backlog. Parks needs to get off the development cycle roller coaster, which is such a strong source of the money that pays for the capital repairs. And I hope that the polling that's underway now is addressing multiple different resources that might help address that. I was surprised yesterday that OED announced the decision to request that you approve extension of the downtown high-rise public subsidy incentive, considering their own consultants say that it won't make any difference in the context of high interest rates and low rent-to-income ratio. When these factors change and the downturn changes, it'll be critical that CNC be in place. Over $10 million of Parks personnel depend on the CNC money. The public subsidy takes over 25 years.
Thank you. That's your time? Next speaker? Rosa? Back to council. Oh, there you are.
Hello, councilmembers and Mayor Mahan, and to the CSA. I would like to address part of the city's budget changes that hasn't been spoken about today. The library leads the city's educational and digital literacy strategy. Dismantling the Maker Spaceship Department would leave thousands of students at a disadvantage. Since 2016, the SJPL Maker Spaceship has provided over 800 science and tech programs to over 90,000 elementary students and community members. The team regularly visits two or three to four school or community sites and events per week. The Maker Spaceship provides curriculum and instruction in 3D printing, coding, robotics, and engineering. And it could easily be expanded to address issues like AI, other digital literacy, and safety measures. And it can, this could be done in a fun and educational way with students. And the Maker Spaceship team has provided quality programming to students, even when the vehicle is under repair, by driving their own cars to sites. Downsizing the vehicle or using a dedicated city van would continue the outreach to students in underserved areas, as well as those who may never attend the library or attend the programs. The department is already equipped with lab... The department is already equipped with laptops, iPads, tablets, 3D printers, robotics kits, and other program supplies. Please consider reimagining the Maker Spaceship to continue to serve the community and further and foster digital equity in San Jose. Thank you for listening.
Back to council.
Great, thank you. Thanks to our public commenters. We are adjourned.